I'll call the September 18th, 2023 County Council Meeting to Order. I want to welcome all of our guests here tonight. We appreciate you being here. Our first order of business is to recognize our Vice Chair Allison Love, who will lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, bless all our endeavors in tonight's meeting. Guide us in our discussions, enlighten our minds in every decision we make. Give us your grace that we may effectively do our part as public servants. Bless our plans, programs, and projects so that we may achieve our objectives for your greater glory. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is Oath of Office for newly appointed board and committee members. If I call your name, if you will please come forward right in front of the podium, and our county attorney will meet you up front so that they can swear you into office. And before I read your name, I do want to say on behalf of council, we do appreciate the folks who agree to sign up for these volunteer positions. They do it without being paid, and rarely do they get thanked. But we need their help when it comes time to serving on these boards. So when I call your name, if you'll come forward. Susan Pining, York County Library Board, District 2. Ashley Shamine, Board of Zoning Appeals, District 7. Robert Jones, Veterans Memorial Park Advisory Committee. And Cheryl Saj, Board of Assessment Appeals, District 3.
I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified. According to the Constitution of this state. To exercise the duties of this office. To which I've been appointed. And I will do the best of my ability. Discharge the duties thereof. The Constitution of this state. And the United States. So help me God.
Thank you again to our volunteers for agreeing to serve on those boards. We do have a special appearance tonight, and I understand that Robert Alexander, who was previously slated to come speak to us, is under the weather. But we do have Mike Gettings, who is here with us to, with the Gravity Center, to present information regarding a funding request from the small businesses and entrepreneur opportunities through the Gravity Center. Mike, if you want to come forward.
So thank you very much, Madam Chairperson and Council, for letting us speak tonight. I am not Robert Alexander. I spoke to him earlier today, and we're all thankful he's not here because he doesn't sound real good, but he's getting over some things. So again, appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you folks. So I believe you have before you a presentation. Is that right? Was it, is it on their screens? Right here? Okay, and what am I pointing at? Either screen? Okay, all right, let's see.
And I just want to add this because sometimes I neglect this. Some folks are sitting out here thinking that we're just staring down, not looking. We do have screens in front of us that are the same that you see, so we are paying attention and watching the screen.
So again, my name is Mike Gettings. I reside at 2184 Chanticleer Circle in Rock Hill. I think that's protocol. So I'm here representing the Gravity Center this evening. And the Gravity Center, I just want to give you a brief history. I know I've got a short amount of time. The presentation that you're going to see parts of this evening, we've already met with the Economic Development Committee, and that was about an hour-long presentation. We'll keep this to about seven or eight minutes if I possibly can. So a little history on the Gravity Center. September of 2021, a group of entrepreneurs got together and decided that we needed to be doing more to help entrepreneurs in our community. And so it's been two years now, a lot of blood, sweat, tears, a lot of hard work. We have seen about 40 founders come through our organization in the last two years, equalling about between 85 and 90 jobs within our county. And those businesses continue to thrive. Some of them found out entrepreneurism was not for them, and it's not for everyone. But the Gravity Center is really the entrepreneur hub for growing businesses, entrepreneurs, small business, and startups. And so that's really our mission and our goal, is that we help those folks. Just a brief testimony about myself. I started my company in 1994, so we're coming up over 30 years. There was no entrepreneurial ecosystem when I started. There were a lot of things I didn't know, a lot of things we had to learn the hard way. And so our focus at the Gravity Center is to help folks that do want to start a business or that are already in business but want to learn how to scale their business. That's what we do. So we are located currently at 153 South Oakland Avenue in Rock Hill. If you've been by, some of you, if you're from the community, this is the old People's First Building over on Oakland, right there, near downtown. And so in this building, we do some coworking space. We have our conference room here, our classroom in this building. You know, a lot of good things that are going on within that building. So recently, we've created what is now known as the Gravity Center Foundation, providing more support for small business and entrepreneurs. So we are 501(c)(3) that allows us to partner with corporations, with other foundations, government agencies for grants and fundings and things like that, to help us carry out our mission of helping entrepreneurs and startup small businesses. Just a few things about our mission statement. Again, I've said we are the hub for entrepreneurism and collaboration and development. Our vision statement is entrepreneurs, helping entrepreneurs reach their full potential. I'll try just real quickly to get to how we're doing some of that. But you see some of our key goals there. And again, you all have this presentation, and you can go back and look at those. I want to just real briefly kind of show you the entrepreneurial ecosystem, starting down at the bottom-left corner where it says entrepreneurship education. So we have folks that come to us and say, I've got this great idea. And so it's up to us then to help them vet that idea. Where are your customers? How are you going to market your business? All those things that need to happen for them to stand up a business. And so that's where we start, and then we go all the way around the wheel. We talk to them about things like, is there a place for you in the market? We help them with research and development, trying to determine if there are other competition. Where is it? What does it look like? All the way to financing, and then all the way back around to actually get into brick and mortar, physical infrastructure, that sort of thing. So that's what it looks like for us when we try to stand a business up and help them do that. So a couple of our important programs. One, we do every Wednesday. I would invite every one of you to come out on Wednesday morning, first Wednesday of the month. So we just had our September, our next one will be October 4th, I believe. And that's at Knowledge Perk in Rock Hill on White Street. It's really sort of, it's a pitch. It's where they have six minutes to tell us their idea, and we help vet that out with them. It's not, it's sort of like Shark Tank, but it's not Shark Tank in that we are, we're not criticizing, we're helping them understand next steps. Okay, so, but it's a fun event. We've had as many as 70 at one time in that room. It gets crowded, but it's a great, great time, a lot of good energy in that room when we do that. Here's some of your investors and some of your folks that serve in the Gravity Center. We have what's called the LEAP Program, Local Entrepreneur Access Program. And what that does is it allows one-on-one time with all of these folks up here that you see on the screen. We have all invested into the Gravity Center, our time, our energy, and our resources to help stand these things up. So if someone has questions about industrial and manufacturing, for example, there's three folks there that they can talk one-on-one with. And it goes that way across the board. We have nonprofit, government services, finance, and all those things. So that's that one. Again, I mentioned this earlier, and I know I'm talking quickly for time. Our venture mentoring service is our highest-level entrepreneurial support. We take about five or six, I'm going to say retired folks that will come along and help us with young startups. And so you put a startup in a room with five people that have been there and done the work and been through a 30-year career, there's a lot of great information that comes out of that with those folks. So to date, about 40 mentors. We, you know, we've donated between 10,000 and 20,000 a month in consulting services through those mentors at no charge to the mentee or the founder. 20 founders, about 95 employees within York County currently in the first two years. Just another little, we're kind of at the hub of some other things that are going on here, but we've talked about Launchpad Leap and the Venture Mentoring Service. That's really the program things that we're really after right now the most. Some do's and don'ts with programming. I will talk briefly about Global Entrepreneur Week coming up in November. We're working with the SciClone Business and Development Corporation of Wenthorpe to do a startup. That whole week is focused on entrepreneurs. We're doing Startup Weekend where we have a pitch that's worked on between Friday and Sunday, and they present for prizes and things like that. And these advocacy things, we can, I'm just going to glaze over that for time. But certainly look at that, you'll see what we're advocating for and why we're doing this. So we come to you with an ask for support of the Gravity Center, and we've provided that to the committee, and so I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. I know that one of the initiatives that council was looking to do was to help small businesses. There are a lot of things that are out there to help our larger businesses. A lot of those things being state recommended incentive programs. But we really have a heart for our small businesses and wanting to do something for that. And I've been to the mini Shark Tank several times on Wednesdays to see how that works and how that fleshes out. I know that the committee, I think, reported this out of committee. But are there questions from council at large that we want to ask?
I just have a quick comment. Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you, you know, for presenting tonight. One of the biggest challenges I think we have in York County is supporting our small businesses and expanding our small businesses. I think that this partnership would open up, not just for Rock Hill. Again, this is an opportunity for all of York County, which is huge. All of York County will benefit from this. So excited to have you as a partner. It's the first time we've got, you know, we've really focused in on the small business entity, but I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Roddy.
I just had a, I mean, I obviously got wind of this a couple of weeks ago at one of the events I attended. We just recently had a group come to Chamber, and we gave them $300,000. You guys asked for $300,000. This is $300,000 from all across York County. I'd like to know how this money is going to be used. You know, if you guys have gotten together and say, we're going to give our time, talent, and effort to help other people. How does our money come into play? Are you guys going to be giving out grants? Helping people financially start up? And what's kind of the process? What are some of the checks and balances? Who's going to be able to come in and access this money? Because I don't want it to look like, have the appearance that we're just dumping $300,000 to a nonprofit because we have nonprofits lined up all the time wanting help. And $300,000 is a lot of money. If it was asking for a sponsorship for $1,000 for a venue table, that's on a different level. We're talking $300,000. That's serious money. And I think what you guys are doing is great. But starting that lineup here outside of our door for money, I think this is going to perpetuate others to say, hey, I'm doing this in the community. I'm doing this in the community. How can I get money from York County? What's the, we haven't set a criteria on this council as to how we're going to give out money to support organizations. And we can't do it fly-by-night because there are going to be a ton of ideas that come before us that are great, that's going to help the community. But what's this body's criteria to give up $300,000?
I would just respond by saying, first of all, we've been at this for two years with our own dollars invested into the Gravity Center to help us get where we are. You saw by the slide the number of folks that we've touched. And there are metrics in place. It's terribly difficult to measure entrepreneurship. None of us in this room know where the next entrepreneur is going to be or coming from. And so they may require more hand-holding, more programmatic things than some others that may come and go through faster. But the point is, we need these funds to help us execute what we've already started for two years. I'm going to equate it to a startup because when we did the Gravity Center, it was a startup two years ago. Now it's time for us to scale the Gravity Center. Now it's time to go seek out those entrepreneurs that don't even know about us yet, that don't know how to get to us. So we'll use some of the funding for marketing purposes, for getting our message out, for going into the different communities within the county and holding maybe some classes, maybe some entrepreneurial-type events that bring them in, that introduce the Gravity Center, so that those folks have a chance to start up their business or to scale their business. So those sorts of things. And then some administrative things, of course, we, you know, it's volunteer hours today, and we're trying to put a position in place to help us through those things.
Now, one thing I'll say to the board and our staff is that we don't even have a business license permit system to collect any funds that we're able to put these funds back out to help businesses, local businesses or entrepreneurs. So we need to develop, if we're going to get on this pathway here, we need to have that serious conversation. And we've dabbled in it a couple of times about starting a business license setup program licensing fee because we don't ask any business that locates in the unincorporated area for a dime to locate in York County. That could be a way that we can raise funds so when somebody like the Gravity Center comes before us, we can say, hey, we're collecting X number of dollars in business license fees that we can put back into this part. Because I would hate to take general fund money from all over the county and dump it to a nonprofit in Rock Hill that we know people from the western side of York County open up a business, not coming to Rock Hill. People over in Clover are not coming to Rock Hill. It's going to be, it's offered, but the reality of it is, they're not going to travel that distance. And Rock Hill is the capital of York County, as I like to call it. It's whether people are going to come there to utilize the services. But I don't think it's fair to Western York County, Clover, Fort Mill, and Tugakay for us to dump $300,000 in Rock Hill for this purposes. You can sell me on it, and I'm open to it, but I'd have to sell that out.
If I could address that. The great thing about the Gravity Center model is we go to the entrepreneurs. We go to the community. We go where they are. And we'll hold events in York. We'll hold events in Clover and Lake Wiley and other areas of the county that we will capture some of those, you know, we've thought of many, many examples. There are shops in downtown York that really don't have any source for, how do I, if you implement a business license, how do I get a business license? And we can take them through that process in partnership with you and help them learn how to do that. Where do I find an accountant? Where do I find my best banker? You know, those sorts of things. So we can go out into the community and do that, and that's what we would do. This is not a Rock Hill, yes, we are located currently there. But no, this is, we, again, we're scaling, so now it's time to go countywide. We have local support. This all started out of the technology incubator in Rock Hill, if you guys remember that. So that went away. The Gravity Center stood up two years ago. And so now we're just continuing that mission.
Mr. Hockley?
A couple of quick comments. I think you're spot on with your questions. I had actually had a taxpayer reach out to me. So I emailed Councilman Aldette and David Swinson, who's over at Economic Development, and asked these questions. How will $300,000 be allocated or spent at the Gravity Center? We gave that, and I think Mike's done a pretty good job answering that, and it kind of complements the response that I received internal from Economic Development auditing. So what controls are in place to audit the accounting, the financial practices of the Gravity Center? You didn't really respond to that, but if you'd like to, I've got a response.
We are a nonprofit. It's an open book, and we, you know, we have our accounting practices through our accountant that we use and all the nonprofit funding that we do. And I mean, we have to be accountable to the IRS. And so certainly, whatever that is that we need to show, there's, you know, it's an open book for, because we're a nonprofit. There's nothing there that we would hold back in any way.
We would definitely want to make sure that we have auditing practices in place and follow-ups, regular follow-ups, quarterly, to make sure that the money's been used for what it was intended to use. And then setting a precedent, which I think is a great question. So you mentioned general fund. So this wouldn't come out of the general fund if this allocation were made. This actually comes out of the Economic Development Fund, which, I don't know what the balance is in that right now, but it's north of $1 million. This would come out of that fund that originates as a result of filos. It's a percentage that we collect from filos. Is that right, Councilman Aldette? Correct? So, but I think you bring up a good point, and that is, are we setting a precedent? Now, I voted for this in committee, but then after I got this feedback, it has caused me to think about things. Are we setting a precedent with nonprofits? And there are ways, I've shared some language with our chairperson of what I thought we might ought to do, some language to put in this to kind of protect us in the future. But I have to say, I do have a little bit of concern that the precedent that we're setting with other nonprofits that are not counting, not-for-profits, that we may be setting a precedent. Is it going to change my vote? I'm not really sure. Should we defer this conversation? I think we do need to talk through this, though, not necessarily tonight.
Well, we're not, but tonight, we are listening, and any council will have an opportunity between now and whenever this appears back on the committee, which is council agenda, which would most likely be the next council agenda unless there are continued questions that council wants to have answered.
If I could just address one more thing, I'm sorry. So depending on the level of investment from the county, we definitely would consider a board seat on the Gravity Center Foundation for someone from the county, and that would help us also with that accountability. And we are also wide open to your suggestions and your concerns, if you have those about what goes on in the county and what you would like to see us do based on our model. This is not a written-in-stone, we're going to do ABC. We're going to evolve, just as we've done the last two years, and try to capture what's being missed right now in the area of entrepreneurism.
Any other questions? Ms. Love?
So I just, I don't really have a question because I've gotten my questions answered thus far. But I wanted to just make a comment, the same comment that I made in the committee meeting. And that is that for the past few years, county council has wondered, we've talked about, how do we support small businesses? What do we do for small businesses? And when you look at small businesses, what's the definition of a small business? You know, we've got longtime small businesses such as Nickel Store, Drum's Tire and Battery, Wilson's Nursery, Allison Love's Fine Jewelry. I've never been comfortable with us picking, who do we help and how do we help them? So to me, it was a relief to see the presentation that Robert made because I felt like, you know, if we're gonna, if we really want to help small business, and like Mr. Hockley says, the money is coming from economic development. So that's the right source of that funding, in my opinion. But, you know, and I've shared this also. I feel like the people that I represent best are the people who maybe don't have a lot of money, the people who don't really have any know-how sometimes. They're not the people who can pick up the phone and call their attorney and get something done by the planning department or county in that respect. So my voice, it goes further for the people who don't, are not in a position like that. And I feel like the same is true of York County. If we're going to help small businesses, let's start with the ones that don't have a voice, and they don't have the know-how, but they've got a talent, or they've got a product, or they've got a dream. And let's help them vet that and make the biggest difference, you know? If you are already set and you've been in business, like, I don't expect any help from the county, right? I've been in business for 25 years, and there are businesses that I wonder, like, you know, how would we vet that as a county when we talk about helping small businesses? I'm very comfortable with the Gravity Center determining who are going to be the next entrepreneurs in York County. Who are the people that are going to qualify, you know? And there will be some that fall by the wayside. A lot of people have a dream, and that's great, but not everybody can realize that dream. So I'm comfortable with the Gravity Center vetting those people. And I do have the confidence that they're going to go all over the county because we've got, you know, local, small-business-minded people throughout York County. And I think if we help dredge them up and get them off to a start, we'll be further down the road. One of the things that council has the opportunity of doing is we allocate discretionary funds to, a lot of times to nonprofits, like Mr. Roddy was talking about, you know, $1,000 here, $1,000 there. And that helps a nonprofit because there are a lot of people helping that nonprofit. There are others helping. So our little, you know, donation to that as a county goes a little way. When I make a donation to a nonprofit, my goal is for that nonprofit to take maybe that $1,000 or $5,000 or whatever it is we're giving them and make it go as far as it can possibly go. So a lot of times I donate to, you know, the Staley Jackson Center over in Clover because they're working with children. And if they can take that money, put it to use with those children, then that $1,000 has gone a lot farther than it would if I just handed somebody on the street $1,000. So I do support this. I think it's a great idea. And as a businessperson myself, there were many times when it would have been great, especially starting out, when it would have been great to have some help and just the wealth of somebody else's knowledge.
Yeah, real quick, just for clarity purposes, the $300,000 isn't all at once. Okay, what this would be, it would be $100,000 a year for three years in a row. There's KPIs and milestones that would be built into the requirement as you move forward. So you would keep us benchmarked and identified. If you're hitting the KPIs. Economic Development Fund, this is where those funds would come from. Similar to what we did with the Chamber of Commerce in the Workforce Riddiness Program. So I think, again, just to state again, I think this would be a great opportunity for the entire county across the board. Anybody that's looking to start a business, expand a business, they finally have an avenue to go to get the support they need. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'll just echo again and start out with where I started from the beginning. Small business is something that I think our council is very interested in trying to find an entree, and how do we help our small businesses with the best way possible? I think some good questions have been raised here tonight. Mike, are you the best point person for a council to ask you questions? If we have continuing questions before it appears back? So I can't remember how long ago. I know it was pre-COVID. I went on a trip, and we went to Spartanburg, and we looked at what they had going on, and it was similar to what I think Gravity Center is intending to do. What I found very hopeful about what they were doing is that they had the buy-in from all of the partners in the community. They had the buy-in from their schools, which we have many here. We have our local schools, we have Clinton, we have York Tech, we have Wenthorpe. We had the buy-in from them, we had the buy-in from Chamber. We had everybody at the table together, working towards a common goal. That's critical to me. I think that's critical to your success. That's going to be important to me as we take the next step in doing this. Very excited about what this can be, as long as we are working together and we have buy-in from all of the folks in this. I think that this is a huge step in the right direction. Thank you for coming to present tonight.
Thank you. And to just wrap up, we want to be in partnership. We want your feedback. We want you to tell us, hey, we know of an opportunity here, and let us build this out together because that's how we're going to be successful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We move now to the next item on our agenda, which is public forum. And this is an opportunity where council sits and listens. And we don't speak, but we allow anyone who signs up. We do allow 30 minutes. We designate 30 minutes of time at the outset of our agenda for anyone who comes and signs up. And what I would ask is what I ask every time that folks come forward, please state your name, give your address. If you will, please make sure that your comments are related to something that council has some authority to take action on. If you would keep your comments to a policy decision and not personally attacking because one of the things we do is we don't attack back. We don't respond back. We listen. And that's our purpose of this entire public forum session, is to be able to listen to the community and hear their concerns. When I call your name, if you would please come forward again and state your name and give your address. And there's a lot of folks that have scratched their names out and been back and forward, so I hope I get this right. Andy Lidle.
Andy Lidle, 517 Cuxhaven Court, Fort Mill. I've passed out or had passed out ASCE 7. The International Building Code refers to this code for engineers to determine loads on buildings. ASCE is American Society of Civil Engineers, and this is the minimum design. ASCE is American Society of Civil Engineers, and this is the minimum design loads for buildings. First thing an architect or engineer does when he designs a building for a client, he determines the building category, the risk category. It would be one through four. This would be put on the drawings, the drawings would be submitted to the county, to the building department for a permit. The building department would have to approve this risk category by giving them a building permit. Risk category one, highlighted in green, is, this is if the building fails, okay, what would happen? Risk category one would be a low risk to human life. God bless the farmer, but his silo in his barn probably would be risk category one because of its location away from a dense population. Category two is not highlighted, because it just says that it's everything other than categories one, three, and four. So shout out to Nickel Store, it's probably category two, just like any other building you go in just about. So what separates category two from category three and four? Category three and four are similar, basically highlighted in orange, hazardous chemicals either stored or in the manufacturing use of, hazardous chemicals is in both three and four, and that's what separates it from two. The user storage of hazardous chemicals, that's in orange. So the difference between three and four, yellow, category three, the failure of the building would be a substantial risk to human life.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate that. I think I forgot to leave, I left out the most important part. When it comes to two minutes, well, maybe the second most important thing. Two things I left out. Number one is we do restrict it to two minutes, and so I would much prefer if you guys could pay attention to the screen and make sure I don't have to cut you off, because then I look very rude, and I don't like looking that way. But the other one is to make sure that we keep all of our comments, if you will just refrain from clapping. I mean, it takes a lot of guts to get up here and to speak, whether you're for or against something. And we don't take comment, I see your hand back there, but we don't take comments or questions from the gallery.
What building was it?
I don't know. Well, he had his more than two minutes to speak. Let me make sure that I say this, too. We have had a very good track record here at this county of being very respectful of people when they get up and speak. It takes guts to get up and speak, whether, because a lot of times, you don't come out here unless you're passionate about something, and usually, it's not just you that's passionate about it, there's somebody on the other side who feels just the same way. So what I want to do is to make sure and keep a fair playing ground, and I ask that you please make sure that we keep all comments. We're not going to clap, we're not going to cheer, we're not going to be ugly to anybody who's speaking, we're going to give everybody an opportunity to get up here and speak, and we're going to let them do it without interruption, so that we can move forward, because we do have a large agenda here tonight. So I'm going to move to our second. It looks like that Mr. McBean has scratched his name out, and so if that's an error, are you planning to speak? Because there's someone else. Amanda?
Bruce Burns from Flint Hill Fire.
He's on this list. Yep. So if you're not interested in speaking, I'm going to move to the next person, Amanda Sisco.
Hey, I'm Amanda Sisco from 1414 Harper's Inlet in Lake Wiley. I'm glad the Gravity Center actually went before I came up here and spoke, because it really opened my eyes to what I wanted to speak about. I'm here in favor of SIFAB. The economic impact that this business is bringing to York County is like none we've seen before, or at least in a very long time, okay? Gravity Center gets their, this money that they're asking for from the Economic Development Budget. This would be huge. I'm all for small business. I support them every single day. But we can't do that on a bunch of small businesses coming up with billions of dollars for our little small businesses. From my understanding, and I've spoken to SIFAB management, their business model is incredible for employees. The pay that they're bringing to York County, the benefits that they're bringing to York County, I'm just not sure why we're against it. I know that there has been a lot of misinformation gone around from the start. I was one of them. I was very against this, because I read all kinds of negative stuff, all kinds of, all the fear mongering that was being shoved down my throat every time I opened up anything, you know? But I did my research, and, yeah, some things, you know, weren't exactly what they said. A lot of things were totally not what was said. So anyways, I just, I come to you, I think this would be great for York County, and 800 jobs, you know, in the end. So that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next is Chris Chamberlain.
Thank you. My name is Chris Chamberlain. I am at 4040 Honeysuckle Road in Rock Hill, and I'm here tonight to speak about the recent approval of tattooing in our county. I own Image Studios on Selene's Road, which provides luxury studios for individuals in the beauty industry to run and operate their own businesses. I've had requests from tattoo artists to rent spaces in our studios. However, the current language for facilities operating in our county has made it difficult for my location and many other locations to be granted approval for them. The dynamic of a traditional tattoo client has changed over the years, with many current clients looking for permanent makeup options, scar coverings, including stretch marks, microblading, as well as traditional tattoos that people get for the remembrances of lost ones. It's my understanding, the wording is currently being rewritten to be voted on on an upcoming council meeting. We would respectfully request that the council to move to a more modern language of the wording, of more of a porthole-to-porthole, or front door-to-front door, when measuring the distances between the commercial spaces and the residential spaces, as opposed to the current language as parcel-to-parcel for these measurements. This will also help to create consistency and uniformity with relation to the measurements used for other business development boundaries. The state has done a great job of defining all safety measures for tattoo artists, but if we don't create a safe and regulated space for these services, the public will continue to be in harm's way while attending unregulated tattoo parties in uncontrolled environments, such as hotel rooms and private residences. Additionally, our county residents will continue to go across the border to other areas, depriving the county of additional tax revenues to help pay for Gravity Center and other things on the agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Martha Kern.
I've been sitting a long time, sir.
We will wait.
I rush to shut sometimes. Good evening. My name is Martha Kern, Fox Creek Lane, Rock Hill. And my subject is related to SIFAB Solar. And I just want to present some bullet points for consideration. Not any necessarily any much in there. Anyway, I'm a licensed professional geologist, and my opinion's pretty much based on that. Okay. Number one, the area is at risk for earthquakes. Hydrochloric acid and hydrofluoric acid are hazardous chemicals. Chemicals must be stored and moved on any property properly, and taken care of all that. Chemicals, for a facility that I understand, the liquid chemicals would have to be arriving in tanker trucks, which would be on our highways and through our communities here and beyond. So that should be taken into consideration. One of the chemicals, saline, is an inorganic compound that will be stored in tanks. It is used as a precursor to make the silicon. It is considered environmental and health hazard. Based on NOAA, in government, saline is a highly flammable, pyrophoric, and reactive gas that constitute a significant fire and explosive hazard. It ignites spontaneously in air at or below 129 degrees Fahrenheit. It is lighter than air, and under prolonged exposure to fire or heat, the containers may rupture violently and rocket. Saline is often also water reactive as well, and will ignite when contact with water or humid air. This is South Carolina.
Thank you, ma'am. Tref McDonald.
I'm not a resident of South Carolina. We're looking to locate our factory at 7149 Logistics Lane, and we're the project that's up for third reading today, SIFAB Solar. Of course, when we entered on this journey with our project three years ago, we thought we had a lot of great buzzwords to share with communities and economic development and city councils, whether it's 800 jobs, whether it's 150 million in capital deployment, whether it's 5 million to local schools and taxes, or 17 million just in tax revenue to the county, whether it's reshoring technology to the US, whether it's protecting US-developed IP, whether it's bringing advanced manufacturing to a local community, building factory 4.0 technology, bringing AGV technology to manufacturing, manufacturing in clean room environments. We do understand that there's been some opposition to all those kind of buzzwords, and we've made a regular appeal to the city, to the county, and the council of our goal to integrate in the community. We've been very, very well received by so many stakeholders in the community. We've been well received by commerce, and really, what we're looking today is for county council to help get us through our third reading, vote yes, and help unite us with York County. And we will be the best neighbor that you never knew you had. That's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Renee Terrari. I hope I didn't butcher that, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's great. My name is Renee Terrari. I live in Buffalo, New York, and I am here for SIFAB Solar. So first, I wanted to thank the council and all of the people that continue to show up. Time is a precious commodity, and I know that everybody has spent a lot of time in this room. The executive team spends a lot of time talking about our values. How do we live them in our life? How do we live them as a corporation? And one of the things embedded into that is transparency. We have been very transparent to our employees, to our customers, and to this council, to everybody in this room, and especially to the people of Fort Mill. We welcome you to call us and ask us any questions. We welcome the opportunity to clarify any data that has been out there that isn't true. Over the whole course of this project, I've had the opportunity to meet many great people, great organizations, and I would really like, no, I would really love to bring 800 jobs to this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bruce Burns.
Perfect, thank you. Hello, I'm Bruce Burns. I'm the Administrative Deputy Chief with Flint Hill Fire Department. I'm here today responding to questions raised during the recent SIFAB public hearing about the fire department's capability to effectively respond to incidents at that address. We are not taking a position on the merits of the FLO agreement. We are only addressing our ability to protect the Logistics Road building and the people in the surrounding area. Flint Hill Fire Department is a career department with approximately 40 employees responding to fire, rescue, and medical first responder hazardous materials incidents. This slide depicts the basic information about the department and the district we serve. As you can see, we serve an urban area with a large population of over 1,000 commercial occupancies. We currently protect three structures larger than the Logistics Lane building, as well as businesses, I'm sorry, businesses with nuclear sources, explosives, and highly volatile chemicals, many of which are in this vicinity of the Logistics Lane. This next slide provides some information on the building itself. Oh, I have to do it, thank you. It is a fully sprinkled building with a fire pump and an abundant water supply. We have already pre-planned the building and have no atypical concerns regarding fire protection. Our headquarters station is 1.7 miles from the site, and we are currently negotiating the relocation of that station to the immediate area of this facility, substantially decreasing our response time. This final slide depicts some of our response strategies for the building, including data from actual fire alarm responses since the building was constructed in 2002. Continuing rapid growth in population and structures within the district is challenging our ability to provide appropriate emergency response. SIFAB would contribute to these challenges, but no more than other projects currently planned or in progress in York County. Flint Hill Fire Department is working closely with York County management to adjust these challenges, and is focusing on increased staffing and reducing response times. We thank you for the opportunity to present this information to the county council and to the concerned citizens of York County.
Thank you, sir. Looks like we had an issue with our, are we back on?
We can do the two minutes when it's fine.
Okay.
That's the issue.
Okay. So we're back on, okay. You're calculating that. Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Next up is Peter McBean.
My name is Peter McVeighn. I live at 907 Lake Club Drive in Rock Hill. As you know from the previous vote on this, I investigated SIFAB for Councilman Huckabee. Understand, there were significant concerns when this was first brought up. Chemicals, travel, that type of thing, back and forth to China. All of those questions have been answered, certainly to my satisfaction, and I know to many other people's. However, there were concerns brought up because of false information, what I would call knee-jerk reactions, and those answers, those questions have been answered. You just heard from Flint Hill. Traffic studies have been done. You heard a lady earlier talk about the ethics of this company. I think that SIFAB is a model for York County. It's a model for the companies that we hope to bring in in the future, that you hope to bring in in the future. This is a company whose ethics should be followed. It's a company whose mantra should be followed. I'm unalterably in favor of SIFAB coming to this county that I've adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mark Howie.
Thank you all. My name is Mark Howie, 112 Halat Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I realize you have two big economic development projects tonight, and I would just like to briefly reiterate, unless we have major tax reform in South Carolina, quality industry is needed in our area for investment and for jobs. I'll say it again, I'm a York County man. I spent the first 18 years of my life about a mile from this building, grew up skiing and fishing on Lake Wiley, Winthrop grad, spent many years in Rock Hill, and for the past 26 years, after I married a Fort Mill girl, have lived in Fort Mill. Happy to be there, of course, I need to say that for her, so. It may be hard to measure, but there are people, there may be people in this room that care as much as I do for this county, but I promise you, no one here cares more about this family, this county than me, excuse me. My wife and I put two daughters through the Fort Mill School District, supported every school bond, and will continue to do so even though they are out of school now. But quality industry brings needed funds for all of our school districts and future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Joe Fazari.
Hi, I'm Joe Fazari from Carolina Orchards, Fort Mill. I just wanted to go over a couple little facts tonight. With the third reading and approval of the fill-out ordinance, SIFAB will not pay any property taxes for as long as they do business in York County. In lieu of property taxes, they'll make what's called a FLO payment, which is substantially lower. In addition, a few other facts. Due to the existence of the multi-county park agreement, 1% of that payment will go to Chester County. Also because of the agreement, MCP agreement, 10% of that will go into your Economic Development Fund, leaving about 89% of that fee payment for your general funds and for the schools. So we've heard the figure of 17 million dollars will go to schools as a result of property taxes, which is really be the... taxes, which is really be the fee payment over the 30 years of this agreement. That analysis also shows that over the payment of the life of the agreement will result in $15 million less in property taxes to York County. And if you apply that same mill rate for the schools, it would have come out to be $27 million. So there's a difference of $10 million when, as a result of this agreement. So the benefits highlighted by the entrance of Sylfab, and really the solar panel industry to Fort Mill, York County, and South Carolina are not free. They do come at a price. The U.S. panel, the U.S. solar panel industry is very dependent on U.S. subsidies as well as local property taxes, along with agreements like this fill-up agreement. They simply cannot compete against foreign competitors. So when you add the source material problems of polysilicon because of China and the Far East being the only source for those, the entire U.S. solar panel industry for the next several years is facing serious substantiability issues. With so many issues facing the county, York County, we need to be careful about the agreement that we are getting into. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Ollie. Wally Buchanan, 256 Baxter Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina, and the closest neighbor. Nobody has come and shook my hand, so I don't know what kind of neighbors they are, but I have went down there and shook their hand and got lied to. They said they've been there since March, don't need y'all's approval, and y'all are just a bump in their road. The water they're gonna use, I got to thinking, if they're gonna use that much water, why don't they recycle that water they're using back into their own plant instead of Rock Hill Water System unless there's something wrong with it? So I was wondering about that. And they've gotten this grant from the Biden administration for solar panels, and in the 70s, United States gave all the solar panel equipment to China because it wasn't feasible, and the United States held it for pennies on the dollars, and now we're getting it back. The product they're trying to sell us in York County is not the product they're making in Washington State. It's like buying an airplane from McDonald's. Do you want one from the hamburger company, or do you want one from the aeronautical company? These are apples and oranges they're trying to sell. It says, since they're wanting to be so friendly to their employees that's making $20 an hour, I am a member in good standing to United Steelworkers. I think when you bring Biden down for the opening, I'm gonna bring the United Steelworkers President in down and see if we can get $40 an hour for the workers. They deserve it, so they can live in Fort Mill instead of just work like a dog in Fort Mill and have to go to Pineville. So I would just ask you that, in closing, I have looked in scripture, there's 42 scriptures about liars going to hell. Lying used to mean something. In God we trust, you used to mean something. I've been lied to, and I think it's time for people to have their foot
Thank you, sir.
accounted for.
Lacey Lane.
My name is Lacey Lane of Fort Mill. I have a few concerns to share tonight. First, the lack of responsiveness from the York County Council members to constituent emails is unacceptable. The York County Mission Statement declares that it provides quality public services in an open, efficient, and responsive manner. Clearly, this council is not fulfilling the mission. York County residents deserve representatives that are responsive to their constituents. Next, when will the council carry out their plan to remove the at-large members of the seven or so remaining boards that have them? Council members stated several times that this was the plan all along and that the council was not targeting the library board by starting with them. However, they've been the only board to have such drastic action taken. York County residents deserve representatives that are honest and transparent with their words and actions. Lastly, the decision to reduce the library board was clearly a political one. This summer, the council member who brings this issue up often was publicly thanked for his efforts in passing the ordinance by the York County GOP. The York County GOP recently shared with pride that they now have three members on our library board, and there is the prospect of getting one more soon. One of these members is the York County GOP Executive Committee person. It was by design, not by chance, that the newly appointed library board members are also members of the York County GOP. At the group's June meeting, they stated specifically that they have been targeting the LGBTQ message in our public libraries. As far as I can tell, the York County GOP group is composed of far-right extremists, and it is not representative of the typical York County Republican. Do these new members even have library cards? Do they frequent our libraries, use library services, and participate in our library programming? The library board applications were FOIA'd. There were highly qualified candidates, including school librarians, teachers, parents, that should have filled those seats over the three retirees with clear agendas. York County residents deserve representatives that will make decisions based on what's best for York County, not what's best for their next campaign. We deserve better. Please do better.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Danielle Graham, Regent Park. Concerning Sylfab, there are 1,300 feet, less than a quarter mile, between two schools being built in the Sylfab proposed location. There are studies being done all over the U.S. showing that hazardous air pollutants cause a decrease in children's GPAs. Did you hear that, council members? Manufacturing with HAPS needs to be further away from children. National Library of Medicine study shows hazardous air pollutants impact children's academic performance. Hazardous air pollutants were linked to .1 to .4 point decrease in GPA. In addition, you do not have the air quality report from DEHEC or the water pretreatment plan. I'm seriously worried, and you are our last line of defense. At the second reading, many citizens expressed serious safety concerns, and Sylfab's response was, "We have values and a 401K." 2,000 children will be attending the two schools going in directly beside the proposed Sylfab location. I can guarantee you, a 401K will not keep them safe. Watch what they do, not what they say. Sylfab sued the U.S. government when President Trump put a tariff on buying from China. I see Sylfab has been buying from China this year, based on the shipping manifest we turned up. Yet Sylfab said they didn't buy anything from China to council. Those are their exact words to council members. Sylfab touted values at the last meeting. Well, apparently, truth isn't one of their values. Please vote no to the 4% fee in lieu of taxation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Gossett, 5717 Lake Wyley Road. Tonight, the council's got two Philos before them, one for the QTS Data Center, one for Sylfab. Those Philos are basically the same Philos. Both companies are gonna have a billion-dollar economic impact in York County. However, QTS Data is gonna have, gonna use more power, more water, and they're only gonna produce 12 jobs. Sylfab's gonna use less power, less water, and they bring 800 jobs with benefits, and that's important. We talk about affordable housing, we talk about food insecurity. That's step one in addressing those kind of problems. You can't fix them from this council by just passing an ordinance. You gotta bring manufacturers back, like Sylfab. They're the type of companies we bring, we need in here. And no, there's not any environmental issues. South Carolina DEHEC has gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. Short of an asteroid crashing into Sylfab, there's not any issue. Same problem with the nuclear plant right down the road. Let Unit 1 at Catawba melt down and see what happens. I don't see anybody wanting to shut Duke Power down. You know, York County Council, whether it's the members here, the members before you, the members that will come after you, the job of this council is to make decisions that are best for York County as a whole, not just your individual carved-out piece of it. You represent all of the county. Look at all the people who are already calling and asking about getting jobs there. Pay scale between $20 and $32 an hour for rich folks, that don't sound like a lot, it's a lot. And for anybody who votes against this tonight compared to those two Philos, I look forward to you explaining that to your voters when you run for reelection. I'm gonna look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Denise Bach, Hammond Road, Fort Mill. Here's my general observations on Sylfab. Those who've spoken out for Sylfab project, those who have spoken out for the Sylfab project have this in common: they don't live near this manufacturing plant, or they're likely to make money personally or for their company if Sylfab comes here. Those of us who live in Fort Mill near this site have a large stake in it, too. What's at stake for us is our property taxes. We have to make up what Sylfab will not be paying. We don't get a special deal. Our property values and our health are at stake. It makes us less desirable to have to deal with yet more traffic when currently there's no date when roads are gonna be widened, and our schoolchildren are potentially at risk, and our air, soil, and water could be impacted by the chemicals they use that have not been properly looked into. Now, all of you in council are smart enough to, if you buy a house, to hire an inspector to see what problems come with that house. You need to act with the same diligence here for those you represent. I've asked both Sylfab and the Water Department for their water pretreatment plan that will tell us what chemicals will be in the water and what concentration. I've yet to receive anything. That's a vital part of the business inspection that you should be doing on our behalf. Our South Carolina DEHEC has never dealt with the solar business before. This is another reason why we need to make sure we know everything about this business before you vote on this. If you allow a vote on this before, all the permits have been approved, and the public has an opportunity to see what chemicals they are planning to deliver on our roads and use in our plant were not being served well. This is a fact. The community did not know about the public comment period on the DEHEC air permit until the 29th day of the 30-day comment period. Now, because of public concern, DEHEC has scheduled a public hearing in mid-October to discuss what's going into our air. We want answers on that, and we also want to know what is going into our water. Please show good leadership and postpone this vote for third reading until we've had all the public hearings, and Sylfab has all their permits approved, and the public has opportunity to look at all the information on this project before you decide on letting them pay a lower fee. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public forum session. We now will move into our consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Roddy.
We have a policy that any council member who requests to have anything in consent can be removed, even with only request of one council member. So we are going to take item number 12 and move that to number three in new business. All right, do we have a motion to approve consent with that amendment?
A motion to approve with consent, with addition of removing number 12 to new business.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Council would now move to our first public hearing, which is on page 11 of our agenda. We will move to our first item. Council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 154 Land Development Code to reduce the number of tiers of the traffic impact analysis to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Do we have any comments? Mr. Bono?
Yes, I've covered this a little bit in our last meeting, but for the benefit of those who wish to participate in the public hearing, I'll cover this topic again briefly here. So this is a text amendment to the Land Development Code related to traffic impact analysis. So we currently, in our ordinance, have three tiers of TIA. The first is that single-page sheet that you see there. All applicants fill that out, and that will determine whether further study needs to be done with either a middle-tier traffic study or a full Tier 2 traffic study. So the goal of this text amendment is to eliminate that middle tier. Staff evaluated the benefit of those, and it was determined that over the lifespan of the ordinance, there really were only one or two projects that had to do mitigation. So the thought is to eliminate that middle tier. So most projects will do this site evaluation form, and then if they reach any of the thresholds here, exceeding 399 average daily trips, 99 peak daily trips, or 29 dwelling units, then they would have to do the full Tier 2 analysis. And so the benefit there is small businesses and other uses that are likely to have limited impact to our road network would be able to avoid performing a costly traffic analysis. Just wanted to point out that there remains language if there are existing issues at intersections that we are aware of, that a Tier 2 analysis could be asked for at that point as well, even if a project doesn't hit those tier levels. So happy to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. On this form, is that gonna be accessible online to the small businesses? They can just download it or submit it online back? How was that for us?
Yes, sir, that's our existing form, and that's already available online.
Okay.
Essentially, at the bottom there, you see it's probably not visible, but it has space for staff to designate if further study is required, and we would be eliminating one of the options there. So one last result.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this change? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have any motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our second public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 154 Land Development Code and Chapter 155 Zoning Code to define the term "property violation" and to allow for rezonings and other applications to be withheld from processing for subject properties with an active property violation to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Do we have any comment, Mr. Bono?
Yes, ma'am. So this is an amendment that impacts both the Land Development Code and the Zoning Code. Similar language is proposed for both. So one of the reasons that this is being proposed is, especially in the last year, our code enforcement activity is up, and our owner compliance in closing out those violations is down. So just some numbers here for you. So resolving cases has always been difficult. Code enforcement is not an easy profession. It's not an easy task. So there's been an increase in 23 additional days to close a case on average. That's year over year, and a 56% increase in cases going to court year over year. And court, just because a case goes to court doesn't mean we're going to get resolution of a violation on the property. It's just another step in the process. A case can be continued multiple times, and an end result could also be that defendant is fined, and the violation is still ongoing, and we have to issue another citation, and we keep going and going on a rolling basis. So the goal here is to just add, modify, I should say, an existing tool in the toolkit for enforcing these violation cases. So this amendment proposes to define what a property violation is and to expand that withholding applications as an enforcement tool. And I just want to reiterate that this is a tool that already exists in code, it just has limited applicability now. So the proposal is to expand it to more types of violations. So here's the proposed term. So a property violation would be any code violation of public nuisances, building regulation, flood damage prevention, stormwater, land development code, or the zoning code. And you can see here the existing language for withholding. Here, it's stated as acceptance. So currently, we can even say, no, thank you, cannot submit that application under limited circumstances, but we're proposed to modify that to processing, so we can receive an application but stop it from moving forward until such time that an active property violation is cleared. And so that's the new language I've got highlighted under B there. And it's important to point out that the existing language already has in it that if a proposed application would resolve the underlying violation, then that it can, of course, move forward. So an example I wanted to bring forward, so say a property is under a nuisance violation for letting grass and weeds grow over two feet high, and the property owner refuses to cut the grass, but they are applying for an accessory dwelling permit. So the county could withhold processing that accessory dwelling unit permit until the nuisance violation is cleared. So that's an example. There is limited applicability here, but it would be helpful in some circumstances.
Do we have any questions from council before we open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Jonathan, will it eliminate if certain ones Jonathan, will it eliminate if certain ones have started houses and not proceeded to complete them, and they come back wanting more?
So, these changes are limited to the zoning code and Land Development Code, but if there is a use that is proposed, and there is an active building code violation, we could withhold permit processing for anything related to an application to the Land Development Code or the zoning code.
So, if they're not completing or whatever, the house would have to be inspected, and they'd have to find a violation there to enact that?
So, the... I think you're asking about a building code violation.
Yes.
So, not completing a property is not a building code violation. It perhaps might be a breach of contract between private properties, whoever might be contracted to complete that structure, but it's not a violation to not complete work.
Mr. Roddy?
Okay. So, you know, I'm looking at the types of violations here. You know, public nuisance, for example. What is the timeframe in which we are going to respond back to resolve... Say, they came to the county and said, "I need to get this... You know, this is my resolution." What's the turnaround time? I... And the reason I'm asking this is because earlier, you know, there was... You guys have a lot going on, right? There's a lot happening from within your group. My concern on this, though, is the fact that if it's something that would be maybe somewhat minor in a big scope where they get delayed and no permit issued just because we're backed up on the county side. So, that... And I just want to be conscious of this for public purposes.
Yeah. So, as with any of our code enforcement tools, our preference is always just to have property owner compliance, and we always give a window for property owners to comply. And if there is an issue that is larger that will take more time, say, a property owner has an extremely large property with a lot of uncut grass, or they have a whole bunch of cars on their property that aren't tagged, and it will take time to go through that, we always grant time extensions. We work with property owners that are under violation. The goal is always to get to resolution. The tools only come out when we're not getting any response from the property owner. So, to the effect that someone is applying for a building permit, say, and they have a zoning code violation on their property that they haven't cleared yet, we wouldn't even start withholding processing of their application until, you know, the point at which we're not getting any response from them at all on a violation.
So, is that... Is the timeframe defined in this ordinance?
No. And we wouldn't suggest that we add one because every case is unique. Every case is different. And we offer every... Any property that's under violation, they have 15 days to clear it before we do anything. And at that 15-day period, that's when we check in. "Hey, where are you? How's your violation going?" Or we'll re-inspect, see if it has been cleared. "Do you need a time extension?" That sort of thing. So, each and every case is very unique.
So, once they say they need a time extension, for example, would you not... Would you then say, okay, you're under a time... Would you still allow them to move forward with their other request? Or are you locking them in? Are you locking them down right up front? That's kind of weird.
No, we would not lock them down up front. Absolutely not. So, yeah, as long as we're communicating with the property owner that has the violation and we're granting extended time, that's part of our process, and we would not withhold processing or any of the other measures that are available in the toolkit until we get noncompliance and no effort at all from the property owner to resolve.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Roddy?
I've always asked for... For the last several years, and you can attest to it and everybody on the county staff, I've always wanted staff to have a lot of leeway, a lot of discretion. But when I'm dealing with the public or I get response from the public as to how our planning department, how our code enforcement and things are working behind the scenes, everything sounds good when we're pitching and saying, "We want to change this." But then sometimes, I think, if you give too much discretion, we may tend to get into abusing our powers in certain departments, certain areas. And I've gotten it from a lot of people who've contacted me as to how things are enforced, what it actually means on paper, what was the intention of council when we put it in. I don't want us to just turn in to be the overburdened police where we're holding people hostage, saying, "You gotta, you gotta, you gotta." If it's something that's detrimental to life safety, the community, yeah, we should hold those to real high regards. But I don't want our staff... I want our staff to be in the business of making things work and not being a hindrance of people being able to, whether it's enjoy their property, expand their property, and things like that. Because I've heard the stories, and I don't want to drag staff into personal battles, but... And I don't always call staff. I don't always email staff when people are saying, "Man, your staff is not being flexible. They don't want to let me do this, and I've offered this..." You know, just certain things. But what I do like about this on our screen is got the important... In the instance where the action proposed and the application would resolve the violation, I do like that part. But I do think our staff needs... Has the fortitude to know that, hey, if they fix this or if they're able to move forward, certain things that are in violation will go away. I like that part, but I want our staff to use the mentality when we're working with, whether it's property owners or anybody, we're in the business of making things work, not to be a hindrance to whatever it is they're trying to achieve. If it's information that they need to correct things... And a lot of times, people are in violation that they don't even know our codes that have them in violation. So, be mindful of that when we work with people. And a lot of times, we don't discover a violation is occurring until we go out there to probably look at something or inspect and say, "Hey, this is not per the county code." "Oh, I've been living here 30 years. I didn't know this wasn't supposed to be like this." Make sure we're giving them time to resolve whatever the issues are, and that's my stance on it.
Any other questions for staff before we open public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
We have a motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All of them? On the public hearing part?
Yeah. I mean, are we overreaching here a little bit? Shouldn't we maybe go to committee and discuss?
I think right now, we're at the point of public hearing and closing that. I think your comments will be more proper at the next motion. I think there are some concerns that have been raised by council. Is there anyone who opposes us closing the public hearing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion? We have a motion to approve.
I'm second for discussion.
All right.
Yeah.
Motion in a second. We are now in discussion.
I'd... I think that this could get kind of tricky on taking people's rights away if it's used in the wrong way. I mean... What I was hoping to see something was to combat builders that were getting more and more permits and not never finishing anything.
Well, this doesn't address that.
Well, I think that's a question...
I don't think this addresses...
You need to ask... I think what you need to do is ask your question of staff, management, or legal as to whether or not it addresses what you're talking about.
Would this address one individual company that we know we're having a problem with?
No.
No, it would not.
Perhaps. And so, I'm not trying to disagree. I think there's some discussion we need to have with planning to evaluate the application of that. There could be some attendant violations that fall under regulated aspects, and I would like to have some clarification and a discussion with him on... With the planning department on that point.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Roddy?
Yeah. You know, I think that... You know, and I ran into the same concerns that Bono expressed there in regards to... I've had people, they didn't realize they were in code violation. You know, they've been living at a location for so long, and, you know, this... It's been an eye-opener to, I think, to a lot of people on some issues here. I'm just a little concerned on this... With this language, I just feel like it's... I'm just not, at this point right now, comfortable with this language, the way it's written, because, again, I think that we have a situation where I think we've become a little bit heavy-handed in some situations with residents out there that we've got to just watch how we approach things, and I'm a little concerned how this is written. So, anyways, just express my concern.
Do we need to table this until we can get a clear understanding of what council... What staff intends to do or how this will be applied? Because I know I was on the committee with it. And if... And I wouldn't want to just say, "Let's just force it through." If there's not a clear understanding as to how this is actually going to be...
It's only second reading. We can get that clarification. At least from our office's vantage point, update council at the next consideration.
Well, I'm... I've said it before. Every time we get the third reading, we very rarely turn something down. So, I'd rather, if it's not going to go through, let's not let it go through a second reading.
I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Roddy. At least as far as my opinion, I'm going to put that out there. I think this might be one of those things that we defer and let council have a little bit more opportunity to figure out, what are we trying to solve here? And let's make sure we solve it with the finest scalpel instead of a sledgehammer. I mean, that's my opinion, but I want to hear from the rest of council.
I would suggest deferring as well. Yeah, I'd recommend it.
So, the motion currently on the table, however, is motion to approve. Do we...
I withdraw my second, and then we make a motion to defer.
Second.
Do we have any point of order on that? Mr. Kendry, are we fine to move forward as proceed?
The movement withdraws motion.
You withdraw your motion?
She would have to withdraw her motion.
Are you comfortable with that?
I personally think we should pass this. And what I would like to ask, if I've got just a second, is for Jonathan to maybe better explain that this is a very rarely-used thing and give an example. Give a... Can you give us a real-life example of the most recent time that this has occurred? I think it's... I think it looks like it's far-reaching, but it's actually a very, probably rarely-used tool.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. It is... There is limited applicability with this. And, again, this is an existing provision. And, as I stated earlier, when we're having a responsive property owner, none of the prevailing options for further enforcement come into play. It's only at a point in time in which a property owner is non-responsive and would just prefer to go to court over the issue. This is just another option to encourage them to come into compliance so they can get their requested application rather than having to wait for that and having to go through with court. So, two examples. We had the McAfee rezoning. There are several violations on that property to this day, and they were allowed to move forward with their rezoning request, which was inevitable... Eventually unsuccessful. However, we are now in the process of going to court over the still-active violations on that property. And they are, in addition to the zoning code. So, under the zoning code and the existing language, the only thing that prevents them from asking the county council to approve a rezoning to redevelop the property would be a zoning violation. But there was, until it was resolved, an illicit discharge violation where we had sewer on the ground. And that is unrelated to the sewer system that has a pond in the back of the property that's regulated by DEHEC, not regulated by York County. This was on private property on the ground. There are several dilapidated homes falling apart. You might all recall some of those photographs from that site. Those are still mostly there today. Some of them have been cleaned up, but not all of them. And that's why that code enforcement case continues on today. And the property owner can at any time apply to have a subdivision on that property, all the while forcing tenants of that property to live with all those ongoing property violations. So, that's one example. Another one is another rezoning application where the property owner had an existing business. He wasn't properly zoned for it. Had an abundance of debris on the property that, to this day, has not been cleaned up. The debris is a nuisance violation. It's not a use violation. And all of his requests can move forward. And that is also in court and has not been resolved to this day. So those are some of the examples. And those take over a year in a lot of instances. And so that's why that rolling average of closing out cases continues to rise. Because a lot of code enforcement cases, we notify someone, say, you have 15 days to let us know what's going on. Please take action. A lot of cases, people will mow the grass. They'll clean up the trash. They'll do whatever it takes. And that is cleared within the 15 days, if not a little bit beyond that. But we do have cases that go on for months and months, and in some cases, years and years. And this is very limited applicability in an attempt to help in small situations where they might simultaneously be seeking some sort of additional approval from the county.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. We have a procedural question on the table. When the second's been withdrawn, it appears that council is interested in moving forward with a deferral. If the comments from Mr. Bono have changed any council member's mind, then I think that there can be a second, another second to Ms. Love's motion. Or there can be the withdrawal of the motion and we can move for a deferral.
Failure for lack of a second.
Yes, sir. Do we?
Move to?
Will you withdraw it so we can defer it? Or?
I'm happy to withdraw it.
Okay.
What'd you say?
She withdrew it. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer.
Until what point in time?
Our next workshop is October the 10th. Will we refer to the workshop since it's been through committee already?
How does council feel about that? Want to get some more feedback at the workshop? Is there any objection to that? Hearing none, it will be after the meeting, after the workshop, the next workshop? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five, six to one. Move now to our third public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and approve third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and a company or companies known to the county as QTS York LLC, formerly known as Project Cobra, with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. Do we have any comments from management before we move to the public hearing? Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request?
Move to close.
Is there anyone here in favor? I'll make sure. You ready to get out?
I apologize.
Afternoon. My name is Ryan Wayman. My address is 409 Liberty Express Place in Knightdale, North Carolina. I'm a program development manager with QTS. And on behalf of QTS, I would like to thank you for your support in this incentive package. Passing this incentive package will aid in QTS's growth and development of new jobs in the community. We are excited to partner with the community and support the community college and high school systems and support county sustainability initiatives. QTS is excited to come to York County and we're looking forward to getting started. So we definitely appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Now we can move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a new motion?
Move to a three.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I was just so excited to get into approving this. That's why I was ready to get through the process. Because I've already gotten calls about, you know, how can I get one of the jobs there because of the substantial pay that's going to be coming with it? As well as knowing how this is going to support our school districts, support our tax base, support economic development. So I was just a little anxious to get this one checked off because not all of them come through and go through this easily, but welcome to York County.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that I'm very excited about having a data center. We held out. And I fully believe that sometimes when you don't take the first thing that comes along and you plan, if you've got a plan in place and something in mind, don't ever accept less than that. And that goes across the board for so many things. I also want to say that not all economic development is the same. I think we learned a lesson with the Carolina Panthers. And if we could go back, we might do a little more homework. We might spend a year and a half looking at that instead of just a year. But not all economic development is the same. And it's very important that we look at these companies and the opportunities that come before us, that we vet those and that we choose those and only those that are great for York County. And in this case, this one is coming to District Two, so I'm very excited about that. There have been some questions raised as far as, I just want to address this because I got messages from a couple of people from my district who live really close. And just by the way, I say "my" district when I'm speaking, council. I took a little heat for calling it "my" district one night. But I will tell you that in this realm right here, it is my district. And if you're sitting out there, it is our district, if you're from District Two. But I want to just say that a couple of people have text and messaged me today. They could not be here, but they have a question about noise and things like that. So we met with the company and we went through all of that. And there will be some opportunities for public input. We'll meet with those closest neighbors there and let them ask those questions. And I believe we vetted those. And I'd just like for them to hear firsthand that those are not going to be issues. So, welcome to York County.
Yeah, I would also like the welcome. I think this is a great opportunity to have, again, having a data center in our county is excellent. You know, when you look at the economic benefit to cost ratio, we're looking at 412 to one. That is huge. For every $1 invested, 412 returned. That is a great return. So again, welcome. Glad to have you on.
Any other comments?
Glad to have you.
I'll just say that, you know, council constantly gets these questions on filos and SSRCs and determining what that is. And it's one of those things that you have to do in order to attract quality investment. And I think that our council is committed to attracting high-quality investment and maximizing the industrial parks that we have in the county right now. And then we get questions of why don't you just, you know, make them pay the full freight? Well, because you're gambling with taxpayer money when you do that. And that's not a place to do that up here. I think we make these decisions based upon the financial information and the facts are in front of us. And I'll just say, this is a huge win for York County. I believe it's the largest-scale investment that we've had. We expect from conversations with the owner and the developer of the property that the investment will actually exceed $1 billion. This will be a huge benefit and boost to our schools, our community at large. This investment opens up opportunities for partnerships with our schools and not only our primary schools, but our tech schools. This investment is aligned with our mission to attract high-paying and high-quality technical jobs. It's consistent with our comp plan. It's consistent with our zoning. This is one of those easy questions to come along. It's critical to know too, and I think this is important to point out, that this investment probably would not have been possible without council's vision. And I'm going to have to give Mr. Roddy some kudos here because the decision to invest in this, using taxpayer money to invest in this property, was made, I think, before all of us got on council except for Mr. Roddy. And that was a huge investment. That turned out well because what turned in from an $800,000 investment of taxpayer money to a sale of the property for $0.3 million, that's a huge return in and of itself, not to mention the amount of taxpayer dollars, the quality, high-tech jobs that are going to come to our community. And I just want to say, we're glad to have you here. Welcome to QTS, to York County. We appreciate your investment in our community. And we look forward to being partner with you in your future success. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our fourth public hearing item. Nope, we're done with public hearing. We move now to old business. Councils to consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, the county, Sylfab Solar Cells, SC Inc., and Sylfab Solar PV, SC Inc., companies previously and collectively identified as Project Mountie, with respect to certain property, including without limitation economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve the filo?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? You want to start us with?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. And I want to reiterate some things that I shared on August the 21st. We were talking about this filo. So just want to remind everybody that our job really is to vote whether we're approving this filo or not. Kind of like we just talked about the last one we just approved. And we didn't get into anything about the company, really. There was no conversation about the background of the company and the integrity of the company. We didn't get into any of that. And normally, that's what happens. But things happened earlier in the year that got us to this point where we're actually involved looking at the company. So I just want to reiterate a few things. Number one, this is a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee and from Economic Development of York County. It does come with a 4% reduction in tax. Additionally, this project is supported by Congressman Ralph Norman, members of our local delegation, the South County Department of Commerce, York County Economic Development, County Management, York County Regional Chamber of Commerce. And as I mentioned a second ago, it's a little unprecedented that I'm even going to make the comments that I'm going to make in a second. But I think it's important to mention this. So in the beginning of this process, when we were, after we had the first reading, I decided to ask Mr. Pete McVane, who retired from the DEA and has worked as a consultant with the DEA, to do some research on my behalf. In addition to what I was doing, I was asking him to do it a little deeper. Because I wanted to make sure that whatever had happened with Sylfab in Canada or Washington State, that we were aware of anything that could have happened. And to my satisfaction, from his research, I'm comfortable with what he came up with. Now, what have I learned about Sylfab? And this is why I voted twice yes to approve the filo. Number one, you've got 12 to 15 trucks coming in per day versus the building's built as a warehouse. And it could have hundreds or 1,000, 2,000, up to 3,000, I think. The traffic study allows up to 3,000 trucks a day. So 12 to 15 sounds pretty good to me. There's a blackout period for the trucks. So between 5:30 and 7:30, no trucks will be coming in or out of the building. 6:30 shift changes twice a day, which is, I don't know of any other employers that are doing that, York County, where they're choosing to have a shift change that's not during rush hour traffic. So I think that's a positive. Wages, benefits, and incentives. I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Water, air, I'm going to talk about that more. Schools, I'll make a comment on that in a second, too. Success in Washington State, they apparently have a stellar reputation. Look to be a pretty good strategic partner for York County. I made some comments on that, which I'm going to clarify in a few minutes as I close out. Two significant tax payments. There's an owner of the building that's paying the full rate tax on the building. And then the company is getting a 4% reduction in the taxes they're paying York County. But it's still very substantial what they are going to be paying to York County if they're approved tonight. The building's a light man, it's zoned as light manufacturing. So if somebody doesn't move into the building for warehouse, it can still be used for light manufacturing. We're just not sure, obviously, what the use would be or who the company would be. But tonight, we do know who this one is. Mentioned this, on the 21st of August, there are over 25 chemical industries in York County. Thirteen of those are located within one mile of a school, like this one's going to be located if it's approved, within one mile of a school. Now, between the 21st and today, I left that meeting and I made a new list of things that I needed to confirm for myself. So these are these items that I needed to confirm for myself in order to vote for this project tonight. So I took the due diligence to, I have to be careful how I say this, but let me say it this way. I made a comment at the last meeting about the school's position on this. And I'll just say, I've confirmed, I know what the school's position is on this. Number two, DEHAC. It was mentioned earlier that there were a number of emails that went into DEHAC asking them to have a public hearing about the permit that they may or may not release. And from what I read and actually read through the response from DEHAC, it appears that everybody that sent something into DEHAC sent the same message in. So they heard the same thing from 50 people. I won't get into any dynamics there, but ultimately, they have to have a public hearing and either they're going to issue a permit or they're not. If they don't issue a permit, then the business doesn't go into the building, right? You have to have a permit to actually be in business. So that's really DEHAC's responsibility. Again, ours is on the filo. Wages, benefits, no, hold on. Let's go to vacating the building. So there was some conversation. I'd written this down as a concern, too, that if they were to vacate the building, how would they leave the building? Could the building be easily used for the next tenant? And to my satisfaction, that has been addressed. Number four, recycling solar panels. So I made a couple of phone calls on this. And there are actually programs in place that apparently, and I don't want to put any words in their mouth, but it appears that there are programs in place to recycle panels. And this company is a part of that initiative. Number five, wages, benefits, and community involvement. Their wages are, let me just share it this way. So the non-management roles for the employees that may be hired at Sylfab will be in the top 30% of York County, as far as wages are concerned. Their management and engineering positions will be in the top 10%. Their employees get a 4% annual pay raise. And they have some other incentives that they receive as well. They have $8,000 a year tuition reimbursement. They provide up to eight hours of community service if you want to volunteer. And I mentioned earlier, on the 21st of August, that I own an insurance agency here in town. And I made the comment at the last meeting that our agency writes 40-plus checks. And I said, businesses, I meant not-for-profits. We write checks to support not-for-profits. And I see from what I'd heard from their HR manager at our last meeting on the 21st, that this is the type of company that we want in York County that is supporting our not-for-profit communities. So I said, they may write 41 checks. I don't write checks to businesses here in this town. I want to clarify that. And I own multiple businesses here. I don't write any checks to anybody. And I'm a, I guess you could say, I like to think I'm a person of integrity. But if somebody wants to challenge me on that, I'd ask you to come to me one-on-one and let's have that conversation. So any of the businesses that I own, since someone called me publicly and made me aware of this, any of the businesses that I own, I don't have any business with Sylfab. I'm voting on this for what I just read out to you. I'm making a strong, informed decision on voting yes for this tonight. And I haven't heard anything that should cause me to look at this any differently. But again, if you don't believe that, I would ask you to come to me and have that conversation with me personally, please. I think that wraps it up. Thank you.
Mr. Roddy?
I'll just start off by saying that it's interesting how we just, in front of this item, approve a $1 billion company bringing 12 jobs. And on the heels of it, we have a company investing $150 million bringing 800 jobs. On the total opposite ends of investment, but these are some of the decisions that we make up here. If we require every company to offer $1 billion of investment, we probably wouldn't have as many. Sylfab comes in at $150 million. We like the 800 jobs. We like the tax base that they're bringing. We like the help that it's going to provide for our school districts, putting people to work. That's one of our major things that we do up here, is to provide jobs for, recruit jobs to come here so our citizens can have a place to work, so they can purchase a place to live, so they can sustain their lifestyle, or whatever they're going to do. If we weren't bringing in jobs, I think we would be considered a major failure as a county. Because unemployment would be higher. Things just wouldn't be lining up across the board. So I like the 800 jobs. I like the tax base. I like what the school district's going to receive. Just a couple of years ago, we were kicking and screaming about getting money to our school districts to support Fort Mill schools. This is going to do that. Not everybody's going to be able, not everybody's going to live in Fort Mill, is going to work at Sylfab. Some are going to come from Lancaster. Some are going to come from Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Clover, and surrounding areas. That's just what 800 jobs is going to do for this area. It's going to pull people. Not sure how many would actually relocate here, but it's a good thing. It's not our job to dig into invoices of who their supplier is. It's not our job to look at the business model. But they've shared some of that stuff with us. So we do get a chance to see that. But we don't require any company coming here to say, who's your supplier? Where are you getting your materials from? It's our job. We're just considering a fee in lieu of tax. That's what this board is charged with. If it was anything above that and beyond it, I probably wouldn't be qualified to do it. That's why we have DEHAC in place to look at water quality, air quality. You've got the EPA that does whatever they're going to do. I'm not qualified for that. But I'm certainly qualified to know 800 jobs and the impact that it can have on this community and the wages that they're going to come in at. That doesn't mean that they're not even going to be high. But one thing, we do know there's a floor, that they're not going to be lower. So I think this comes with a lot of positives. And people who live close to anywhere should have a concern. You should have a concern. Not that saying that we don't have that concern, but that's not what this board is designed to do. Obviously, and hopefully, DEHAC will address any air quality issues. DEHAC will address any water issues. But don't expect this board to hold up a fee in lieu based off what DEHAC has yet to determine. And I assure you, if DEHAC doesn't release these permits, Sylfab can't open. So it's a non-issue to this board at this time whether these permits are in place. Because there's no way Sylfab is going to put 800 jobs in there if they can't use water, if there's a concern with DEHAC on the air quality. So we would be putting the cart before the horse, I would say, if we were to hold up the fee-in-lieu agreement at this point, at this juncture. And understand that there's going to be a meeting and understand some things came in at the last minute. Those questions will be answered. But I don't think it's incumbent upon us to say that we need to wait on DEHAC. Because DEHAC's not waiting on us. We are two totally separate entities. They have two separate decisions to make. And on the concern about the fee in lieu, this company can still come here and operate whether we give them this fee in lieu or not. So if you have environmental concerns, they will still be there. If you have water concerns, they'll still be there. But they've met all the parameters to qualify for the fee in lieu based off what we've done in the past when we offered these kind of incentives. So it wouldn't be right for us to give it to this company who met, checked all the boxes and say, well, just because we have some citizens that are concerned about environmental water, we're not going to give it to you, but we checked all the boxes. And this company has been transparent. I know I just had a meeting with someone on Friday. We've been trying to schedule this meeting for the last month. And it was only on my end. I couldn't get the scheduling right. Had an opportunity to ask questions about things I've heard, things that I may have been concerned with. I think they've been very open and transparent about their business in cases where they didn't even have to. And so I applaud them for that. I know more about Sylfab over the last several months than I've known about any other business that was coming to locate here. And one thing that I'm a little shocked and not real comfortable with is we assign these projects names to protect companies so that we can do our due diligence. Somehow, this company name got out in public and helped escalate some of the things. We give these project code names for the very reason, for the anonymity, to be private. And it's not right that we got, somehow this leaked out, what this company was, who they were, where they're coming from, all the goods about this company. That wasn't right on somebody's part to put this company's name out. We've had Project Avalanche. We've had Project, every whatever thing you want to call it. And we tried to keep it in-house. But it seems like when this project hit the books, and it's been going on for a couple of years now, that all of a sudden, who this company was kind of got out. And I think that helped fuel the fire, got other groups involved to raise issues that was a non-issue to this council. So hopefully, in the future, this council, staff, and whoever else is involved, respect what we're doing here by the process. Let's keep these companies' names out of the media and only use these code names. Because it's unfair for one company to have to jump through hoops and answer questions way before its time. And so I would beg and plead with my colleagues, the next big project that we get, let's make sure we protect- the next big project that we get, let's make sure we protect the companies that want to come and bring jobs here, because it's not fair, it's not right for them to have to operate and do their due diligence. You know, we've, we've done our due diligence on our end to try to secure a fee-in-lieu. Great work to Swenson and his team, who've gone out and who've babysat and grew this project to come here over the last several years. And we don't get, we don't get all the information right up front when, when he's talking to these companies, but please, ma'am, please, sir, let's keep these companies' name out of the media and only talk about the code names, because it's not right for them to do what they need to do to be successful here. And hopefully, tonight, we'll be saying welcome Sylfab to York County.
So, this, this has been a very ongoing topic. And, and like I said a few minutes ago, I don't, I don't think every economic development is awesome economic development. I think you can measure those, maybe even on the hurricane scale, you know? Maybe one's a four and one's a 10, and there's a big difference in those, in their investment. And I don't really think it mattered, in this case, that the name, the name got out early on, because I don't think the concerns have anything to do with the name of, or who the company is. I think they're probably a great company. I personally feel like, though, that I am elected to represent the people. And over time, we've not had a lot of outpouring from the public. So when you get that, maybe you should consider that, the source of that. And you could, should consider what, what they're saying, because we don't get that a lot. I would like to correct one thing that Mr. Huckabee said, and that is that the Economic Development Committee probably is not in favor, because there are two of three council members who are not in favor of this, most likely tonight, me being one of them. But I think, I couldn't, you know, put my head on the pillow at night, knowing that across York County, there are people with major concerns, fears, and, and, and the like, that we haven't, we haven't dealt with those issues with, with, with any, with any other company before. And, but you're right, it does, it, it, you know, it's 800 jobs, and maybe any 800 jobs are 800 jobs, and that's great. The benefit to the schools, maybe any, any benefit to the schools. I mean, I'm sure the schools are glad to get any amount of money that they can get. But I'm not here tonight for, specifically for jobs, or specifically for schools, or specifically for money. Because I'm here tonight for people. And this is likely to pass, and there are going to be a lot of people that are very disappointed, thousands of people. We're not talking about 10 people, you know, upset about a development coming behind them. We're talking about thousands of people, neighborhoods of people. And a lot has happened leading up to this, you know, the rezoning of the property, just, just different, different things that happened. And then at the very end, we get more information. And, and so the things that made us dig, and I say dig, because I didn't do any digging, but I was very interested in what was dug up. And, and what made us dig was concerns. And when we had concerns, we were told things. And when you find out the first thing might not be true, it makes you look at the second thing, and the third thing, and the fourth thing, and on and on and on, until you find out that you might have a little bit in you that doesn't totally trust a company, whether they're bringing 800 jobs and millions of dollars to schools. And I think we have to be careful to sit up here and reiterate, as council members, the promises that a company have made, because we might get a year, or five, or 10 down the road, and find out that, you know what, those are broken promises. We might be being promised a rose garden, and we might get more thorns than we bargained for. My biggest concern, because it's not about, it's not about those things, it's not about the chemicals, it's not about the traffic. Listen, that area is used to traffic. What it's about is a, the assumption on a part of a company to come to a county before the council has weighed in, before we've given a final approval or final denial. They are permitted, they are in the building working, they're unpacking their bags, and we, we as a council are now going to give them a tax break. I have an issue with that. It's all about, it's not about the money for the schools. It's about the taxpayer money, and that's where I draw the line. So maybe had they waited, and they hadn't told things that I feel like were untruths, I might be all in favor. And I'd be able to put my head on the pillow tonight and say, you know what, there are a few people upset, but I think they'll be okay. I think they'll see that things are going to be exactly as they've been told. I don't feel that way tonight. I feel like we are shorting ourselves as taxpayers, and it's disappointing. It's very disappointing to me. This is not my district, but everybody needs to realize that it could be your district. It could very easily be your district, and you could fight as hard as Debbie Cloninger has fought and not win on behalf of your people, and that is disheartening.
Mr. Hattie?
Well, first of all, thank you for everybody, you know, coming here tonight and giving feedback. You know, as we go through this process, you know, it's, it's open. We're transparent, and we're here to listen to everyone, what we, what you're delivering to us. So I want to thank you, each and every one of y'all, for being here and giving your feedback. It's critical. Sylfab offers a lot. They got a lot of jobs they're offering. The benefits are really good. And, and again, I've heard a lot of great things about the company, you know, which have been talked about, and, and I, and I applaud them for what I've heard about. And I think that's excellent. You know, as a county councilman, I, you know, I look at these things, and, and being on economic development, I am for manufacturing. I am absolutely for manufacturing. I think there's a lot of opportunity for manufacturing. But it, but the final decision then, on something like this, for me, has to come down to where and what is being brought in. The where is critical. And the what, I think, again, solar manufacturing, nothing against solar manufacturing. This is the first time we've had an opportunity. We haven't dealt with solar manufacturing in this state. Okay, this will be, this will be the first time, at least for us here. Okay? So, so there's a process we have to go through. And we got to understand, first of all, you know, the, the, the impact to the community. And the impact to the community is, is, again, number one for me, as far as health of the community. Now, again, Sylfab could be 100% spot-on, again, but as I go through this process, there's certain things I look for in here. And, and one of those things is where it's located, as I mentioned. Also, what was mentioned earlier is we do have two schools that are built right next to this property. Their, their property butts up to their property, again, elementary and a middle school. So when I look at this, and then I look at what DHEC does, okay, and I look at air and water quality, my expectation, again, as we go through this process, is that we've got a new company, we've got a location that is concerning to it. So I need to know that DHEC has approved off on both air and water. And we have neither. We have no air quality. We have, we haven't gotten final approval. We haven't gotten final approval of the water. There is a public hearing, October 24th, to talk about the air quality component. And again, I think it would be prudent for us to hear that before we would make a decision like this. However, as I look at this, I look at the location, I look at the type of business, which, again, I have nothing against solar panels, I have nothing against manufacturing, and nothing against manufacturing of solar panels. It comes down to location, and an understanding of what is going to, how, and how it's going to impact the area. Because we don't have those two approvals yet, I cannot support it tonight. And then as we look at fee-in-lieu, okay, as we talked about, and I mentioned, you know, the, the four, 12 to one, so $1 investment, $420 back, as we mentioned earlier on the earlier approval. Sylfab brings, brings a value statement back to us, and again, this is all public knowledge here, economic benefit to cost ratio is $1 investment for $73 return. Okay, that, again, it's, it's a, it's a good return. It's not the return I spoke of earlier, but it is a good return. So I want to kind of talk through this as we look at fee-in-lieu. As we look at manufacturing in a whole, federal support and state support, at least on the surface, appears that it is there. They have received some support from at least federal and state, which is great. I think that's wonderful. But again, looking at this, and looking at a fee-in-lieu, and that's all we control, is the fee-in-lieu component here, there would be more investment, and they could move in here, and we could turn this down tonight, and they could move in here tomorrow, and they could do business. And if we didn't pass the fee-in-lieu, there would be more money going to the school district. Okay, more, again, there would be more money. I think at the end of the day, I think we've all looked at all of the evidence or information that we have. And again, tonight, I, I cannot support that based on the fact that, again, I'm not seeing an approval on the air quality and the water quality. And I know this is pending on air quality, water quality, but when you have a situation where we have something that's coming in here, that we really never have dealt with before, and it's next to a middle school and an elementary school, I think that I have to pause on this one. And again, that's why I won't be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
We're kind of going down the line. Do you want to go, Debbie? All right. Would you like to go, Mr. Atkins?
I don't know where to really start. I was questioning about this, to start on, but I did the research. Right here is 11 companies that already, chemical companies near you, that are meeting the same requirements that they're going to have to be required to meet. As far as the green energy incentives and all that, this company already tried to come, actually, when Trump was in, and it, it did receive, no federal incentives from the current Biden administration are tied to this project. However, the federal incentives from the Department of Energy for Research and Development of New Technology, granted under the Trump administration, to get production away from China. Now, I don't know how many of you in here, and you heard my spiel last time, but if you own a computer, and you own a cellphone, 80% of all of that comes from China. I don't know what it's going to take to get manufacturing back in our country and start somewhere, and at least, we're competing against China. Some say, well, they're getting stuff from China. Ain't no company going to just overnight not get anything from all the places since NAFTA that we sent everything out of the country. So I can stand here and run my mouth all night long, and you got people on both sides of it, but that's all the research that I've done.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. Back in February, we had an economic development seminar, and our instructor talked, I was very new on council, and very excited to be representing District 7. And also, I love economic development, because I was a small, retired small business owner. So I believe in business, and I know what it will benefit, how it benefits the community. So she spoke about the fact that the most important thing in economic development is that you make sure, when you bring a project into a community, that it fits the community. That was her number one statement, and she was solid as a rock on that. I even spoke to her after the seminar, because I had heard about this project, and I was very concerned about it for my community. And I said, you know, I'm so confused about this. And, and she said, well, just the things that I'm hearing on the surface, you know, that you have a right to be confused and upset, it doesn't really sound like it's for your community. I understand what Sylfab is saying, that they are the stakeholders in the community and commerce, is very excited about them coming. I know that the Regional Chamber of Commerce is excited, and that York Electric is excited. But we, the people, are not excited. We are not happy. We are not opening our arms to you. And there were times when some things have been spoken up here about boxes being checked. Well, guess what? There are not boxes checked. We're going to talk about the TIA. That's a box that's not checked. A one-day, on a Wednesday after Easter, is not a TIA. And people that don't live in my community, coming here and speaking in favor of Sylfab, you come to my community, I know you have traffic in Lake Wiley, but you come to my community those days, any day of the week, Monday through Sunday, seven days a week, and we will show you some traffic. Okay, so that's not checked. The second thing that's not checked is an air permit by DHEC. Now, people may believe in miracles, or you may not believe in miracles. I happen to believe in miracles, and I believe that God provided a miracle for my community, when all of a sudden, on day 29 of a 30-day public hearing, or not hearing, but a public comment for DHEC, I found out that it was day 29, and I'm going, oh my gosh. So I got in touch with a few people, and, you know, yes, they were the same comments, because it was day 29, and they were desperate to let their voices be heard, and let DHEC know that, hey, we didn't even know it was day 29. We didn't even know it was public comment time. So I spoke with a gentleman at DHEC, very nice gentleman. He was very apologetic. He has opened up public comments again. So all you guys out there, please make public comments. Don't go by the, don't say the same thing. And then they're going to do a public hearing. Well, maybe that won't work either, you know? But at least, we will feel like we have turned over every single stone that we could to protect not only our children, but our property value, our health, and who knows? Can you write me an agreement right now, that those chemicals that are going to leak out of that air filtration system will not cause cancer in 10 years from now? Can you guarantee us, our community? Because I live one mile away. I want to make sure that I'm safe, and that my, my grandchildren who stay with me sometimes are safe, and all you guys out there from my community, they have kids, they want to know. All the kids that are next door, 1,300, 13,000 feet away, want to know that they're safe 10 years from now, that they're not going to have cancer. I want to know. You're going to write us a guarantee that that won't happen? You going to write us a guarantee that that won't happen? Final note on the employees. You're not going to be able to see this picture. This is a picture that Sylfab presented in their community packet. And it, I don't know if you can tell, there are three people here. One, all three are wearing hazmat suits. The 800 employees, they have to have to get this fee in lieu. They have to. They have eight years to do it. The first year will be 125 employees. Now, in this little chart about Sylfab, it says that there are going to be a total jobs, new versus, and I'm not sure exactly why they did that, new versus relocating employees. Now, at the last time when Sylfab spoke, according to the HR lady, that they are lined up in Washington to come here. That was her exact words. They were, they're lined up. So I ask you, are they going to be here? Employees from Charlotte, because they probably have to be from Charlotte because we can't even fill security guards at schools right now. There are openings for security guards. Out of 12 applications, they filled one. One. So I think they're probably going to have to come from Charlotte. The other thing is their true hourly wage for those, I think it's 460 of the average worker is around $19 an hour. All the rest of that is, are perks. The last time I talked to a bank, I think they want to know how much you're making an hour. They don't care about your vacation. They don't care about your healthcare. They have to have the hourly rate to give you a loan for a place to live or even an apartment to rent. They have to have a place, you know, they have to have a certain guarantee of what the wages are. So these are just things that are on my mind. I have many more, but just know that the boxes are not checked. And we have, we're a strong community. We're close, and we'll have many more things come before this council. I hope that in the future, council will listen to my community.
So the only issue before us tonight is the FLO. But I want folks to understand that I personally care, and I think the council members up here have taken this very seriously. I care about my community. I care about the citizens. We have had folks come and speak to us tonight in support of Sylfab. We've had folks come and speak against Sylfab. So when you say represent the people, who is that? Well, it's everybody, and it's a hard decision for council to make. In this case, the thing that bothers me, and it continues to bother me, is misinformation. And you can get misinformed and then get scared about things that we've not had an opportunity to really vet. Even tonight, hearing that Sylfab's not going to pay taxes, that's simply not true. Or hearing that there's no protections in this agreement for the county in the case of liability, that's not true. That is simply not true. Again, there is no zoning, and there's no environmental component to this. But I do want you to understand that no FLO incentives will be given. The only thing that we can decide is FLO, and that's driven by county policy, which there was a county policy before this, that if you meet the criteria, then you meet a base level. And I want to remind folks that this is a base level incentive. They're going to pay the same rate of taxes that you and I pay. They're not getting a break on that. They're not getting SSRCs that the prior FLO that we just approved got. They're not getting that. So I do want you all to understand, we don't have control over the permitting process. Sylfab has to meet those requirements independently, and they have to go before those boards and meet those criteria independently. They have to get a favorable decision on that before they even have a benefit of the FLO. The policy that was before council and that's been approved by the council committee is that you will extend these, the 4% in the cases where you meet the criteria that was here. And this has been before council since November, and it's come up again. And we've been wrestling this, with this from March because there are questions that somehow this had happened very quickly. That's not true. This has been wrestled with for a long time. I do want, and I think it's important, that for us and our commitment to our citizens is that our job is to make sure that every place where there is, and there aren't that many, where there is industrial designated. And this area is in an existing, established industrial park that has been in industry for 30 years. Council recently approved it again this year in the comprehensive plan, approved this for employment. I do want to ask, and this is important to me, that we hear from management and from our, I want to hear from you about the financial piece of this. And I want them to hear directly from staff on this position of what are the financial piece to this and why it was recommended by you for us to move forward with this.
Yes, ma'am. I think all of you know there are three people that evaluate these funeral deals before they go to council. And I'm the stingiest when it comes to giving tax incentives. We are in a position, being a border county, where our business taxes just aren't fair. And I think all of you are aware of that, and that's why we have to do Filos. One thing I look at is the opportunity cost of this business versus the next. And one of my comments would be somebody's going to come there and pay the full rate. We don't need to worry about giving them an incentive. I had the auditors and assessors' office go through and look, do an exercise to look at similar warehouse sizes, what we're paying for the stuff inside the warehouse, what we're receiving for the stuff inside the warehouse because there's a separate taxpayer paying for the building. There were two warehouses that neither were the size of this building, but we extrapolated that size with the, what they're paying on this size building. The tax revenue from, when we say old-school warehouse distribution was about $50,000 a year, which, forget that, okay? Now, talking with David Swinstone at Development, what if something like an Amazon came in there? High-tech, a lot of fancy warehouse distribution equipment. You might see about a $10 million investment in the building instead of a $1 million investment. So that goes up to about $450,000 of tax revenue from that. Manufacturing, and this is, you know, there's really no comparison between manufacturing, warehouse, and distribution for tax revenue. With the manufacturing and the $150 million investment, you're looking at a little less than $2.5 million a year in taxes. So you back out the 1% of that that's going to go to Chester, because it's the most industrial park, okay? You back out the other 10%. And there is a huge difference between what we could be getting in taxes versus what we can get through this. I think when that building was built, everybody expected warehouse distribution to go there. That's what it was built for. Sylfab, you know, their requirements for building space, it fits very uniquely in there. And from a financial standpoint, this is a home run for the county with the investment we're going to receive. There's no sweeteners, and the sweeteners, all the SSRCs, it's been referenced a couple of times, on top of this. This is the flat 4% with no additional sweeteners. So from a financial standpoint, this is a quality investment that we wholeheartedly support in there, again, compared to the alternative of what would go in that space.
So it's five and a half times even on the worst-case analysis?
Yes, ma'am. You're looking at about 50 times more on what we, traditional warehouse distribution, about five and a half times more if you've got something highly automated in there.
I also want to ask the question of, and because I asked this of legal when we had second reading, are there indemnity provisions? Please explain what that means for folks who don't understand that piece.
Yes, ma'am. There's a large, there's a very broad indemnification provision in the fee agreement, which provides that the county, its constituent members, its officials, its employees will be indemnified, they will be defended and held harmless from any, any and all claims made regarding the project or performance under the agreement. And there is some, a more specific provision of indemnification and defense where any conditions on the project that are not met, any breach of the agreement, any act of negligence by the company or its sponsor affiliates, the signees or lesses. And significantly, with some of the subject matter that's been discussed tonight, there is an environmental provision, the name environmental violations or environmental conditions that are met, are not met. In all those instances, the company will defend the county and its employees, officials, for many actions that may be brought against them on account of the performance under the agreement by the company. And that simply means a defense will be provided. And there's another provision, if there's any pecuniary liability that is adjudged against those, notwithstanding the defense obligation, that will be borne by the company as well. So there's no exposure to the county by virtue of entering this agreement.
So a couple of things that I want folks to understand, my perspective. I did not support the Panther FLO, and it was because there were free taxes for the investment period. That is not the case in this. And I think there are good reasons from the committee that supported this and from management who said this is a better opportunity for that community than the warehouse and distribution that was already there. And you're not going to convince everybody. Not everybody's going to listen. But I think as a council member who's trying to do the right thing, who's looking at this and looking at a balance, this is the base vanilla that this council has set a policy decision how to do it. And if the council wants to reconsider how to go about doing base-level offerings, then that needs to be done from a policy perspective through the committee. This opportunity, if you look at the facts, is much better than warehouse and distribution. And I'm answering the call to folks who have reached out. It's less traffic impact. It is higher-quality paying jobs. It is significantly higher financial benefit to the schools. This question of, should we, should you not offer anything because they'll come anyway? That is not what they've said. They've said they needed this to retrofit the building. I'm not willing to gamble with taxpayer money on that issue. Having said that, at second reading, I was very specific, and I asked Economic Development and Legal to look into providing conditions to, number one, this is something I've been asking for, for about a year and a half now, that we include in all of our Filos some standard language that allows for clawbacks in the case of providing incentives and their issues. What I would ask for, and is that an amendment? And so I guess I'm going to make a motion to amend the approval with the condition that the FLO agreement be amended in three particular areas. One, my understanding that the wages that were represented were 22 an hour. That was represented, that was put on paper, and that was agreed to. That the company and sponsor affiliate shall procure, if obtainable, maintain and maintain environmental insurance for the duration of the incentive agreement in the amount of $1 million, naming the property owner and the county as additional insureds and naming the county as certificate holder along with required proofs of insurance. And that for the duration of the FLO agreement, that the company place a letter of credit in the amount of $50,000 on file in case of the site being left. And this addresses some of the community that had come forward for purposes of access to the funds in the event that the respective designees determine they must address an occurrence necessitating the cleanup in order for us to get this to a business, another business to take over at that time. I would ask for a second on that amendment. We have a second on that amendment? And the reason that I did this, and I believe this should be in all of our Filos going forward, and I've requested this since we had another issue that has come up. I think that you can't do this in normal instances. A business has a responsibility, and I feel very sure, certain, that Sylfab will meet that responsibility. But if you're extending incentives, I think you can build into this some additional protections, especially in a clawback. But because there are no SSRCs being granted in this agreement, it makes it a whole lot more difficult. And so this is the way to address those concerns. It's important to me that this, that it be clear that I don't have any reason to believe that there's going to be an issue here. Everything that I've asked for from the company, they've given to me. Everything that, and I've checked it, and I've double-checked it, and the information that they've given me has been assured. I also think that if we are going to be, some of the companies that have already gotten this level of permit are folks like Duke Energy, Shutterfly, Incum, Nation Ford Chemical. These are all folks that are serving us well in this community, that are doing business of the people, that are offering jobs. And that's just a few, to name a few of them. So these are the concerns that I've raised. I will say, I think that Sylfab Solar's arrival in York County is a major investment. It's a major investment that will create 800 skilled jobs and establish the company as a cutting-edge manufacturer in our community. This investment is particularly significant in that it will help position us as a more competitive player, the US as a more competitive player in a previously monopolized and highly technical solar industry. We are grateful to the utility partners for support in their support of this opportunity. And I think that we should welcome Sylfab here because I think they will be a good partner. We do need to take up the matter of the amendment and before we take up the main motion.
So you're saying putting in writing 22 an hour environmental insurance, which names us on the certificate, and you said,
Letter of credit.
Letter of credit for $50,000.
Right.
Is $50,000 the amount, is that?
Well, it's an amendment that we put in here for cleanup, and I think they have a responsibility to have that other insurance that's in $1 million anyway. They have responsibilities to, they're a leaseholder. I mean, that's the amendment that I've put on the floor. All those in favor of the amendments, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Their amendment passes four to three. We're moving now to the main motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to three. We move now to our first item of new business. Council to adopt a resolution consenting to and ratifying the assignment and assumption of a fee in lieu of tax agreements from RG Baxter Lane LLC to Exeter 7149 Logistics LP and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries four to two. Council to approve intergovernmental agreement with the City of York for weekday magistrate services for municipal court. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Yes. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non, motion carries. We now are going back to number 12 in consent. Council to dispense with referral to committee and approve a resolution in support of cost of animal care legislation, House Bill 3682 and Senate Bill 456.
Yeah, I actually do have this removed simply because I'm the chairman of the Public Works Committee. No one has come to me to say, hey, this is what we're going to send a resolution in in support of. And I've put everybody on notice a time or two before that, if things are going to be, things that's going to be around Public Works, I should be notified, whether it comes through the committee or not, I at least should be notified. If we're sending a letter in support of it to Columbia, because I've never, no one's addressed House Bill 3682 and the Senate Bill 456 with me to say, let's move this, bring this to a committee to see if we can support it because we've done other things through a committee. And I just, it's not right to put things on the agenda, slam them in consent, and don't come to the chairman of the committee. So not that I wouldn't support it, but just I need to be kept in the loop of what's going on if we're going to send something to Columbia that has the support of Public Works. It didn't specifically say Public Works Committee, but it says county management, Public Works, and Animal Control recommends approval. Well, I'm the chairman of the committee. No one thought enough to say, hey, Mr. Chairman, what do you think about signing on to this so that we can send it to Columbia? so that we can send it to Columbia? We wouldn't dare bring any approval from, for Gravity Center without going through Economic Development and just slap it on here and say, let's approve it. So let's don't do this when it comes to Public Works Committee.
That's a fair point. Mr. Brody, I would certainly entertain a motion to refer it to your committee.
Send it back to the committee.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter is referred to committee. We move now to committee and other reports. Planning and zoning committee, Chairwoman Debbie Kloninger.
Okay. The planning and zoning committee met Wednesday, September 13th at 6:30. Present were Councilwoman Bob Brody, Councilwoman Allison Love, and myself. We discussed tattoo parlors. There are questions, and planning is getting back to us for more allowances. We had a discussion on connectivity, when it is a good idea and a bad idea. Planning is to review again and evaluate for future discussions. Event venues were discussed as requested by council, and we are awaiting results of a discussion between legal and planning. There is a new zone. It's OA, and it's connected to Carowinds. So the staff is going to be bringing forth a motion about this new zone, and we will hear more details about that. Council initiated with, there's another new zoning, which is RMX 6, and it's for town homes and multifamily. And we have some situations now that there are existing townhomes, multifamily, that are not in this zoning. So we need to bring it all up to be conformed in this. So we will be hearing about that as they come up for evaluation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did I miss something?
Do we have a, you didn't have that, no? Okay. All right. I think we move now to our citizen concerns. Natasha Witherspoon to address counsel regarding the proposed hate crime ordinance for York County.
I don't see her out there, but she's in the overflow.
Can y'all check? We'll move on to the second one, but if we all check with overflow and make sure we don't have anybody who's waiting to appear, if we can just double-check. Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and move on to Perry Stacks to address counsel regarding the 660-foot rule in the county overlay.
All right. So I've got an awful lot of information in a short amount of time, so hopefully we can get through this pretty quickly. Try to keep up, please. My name is Perry Stacks. I live at 639 Drury Lane, and I am the president of the Tulmore homeowners association. So our board recently met with Gary Kangliosi, who is a developer who had been working on an express car wash project for the 4.7 acre parcel of land on Charlotte Highway next to our subdivision. Yeah, let me borrow some of his drawings for this slide as well, in the interest of clarity. He explained that the parcel of land that is zoned, that is zoned general commercial is in the Lake Wiley district, and because it is over 660 feet away from the nearby 7-11 gas station, an express car wash can be developed there by right. And this car wash would front Charlotte Highway with two retail-out parcels fronting Catamount Drive. Now, this is also coincidentally beside our park, our community playground. He informed us that he originally wanted to locate the express car wash on a tract of land next to the 7-11, and had approached this council about repealing the 660 separation rule at that time. He demonstrated how well this site was laid out for this type of project with car wash. And this would also make a little bit more convenient spot for people in the community, for a one-stop shop of both car wash and gas. Very similar to the Sam's Express, but is much further down the road, closer to Lake Wiley. So, the overlay district will not allow this compatible use due to the 660 separation rule close to the 7-11. We feel this is a really bad idea, and this is why. The stated purpose of the separation rule in the first place is to create a mix of land uses that minimizes the adverse impacts to existing transportation networks. Using the Sam's Express site as an illustration, you can clearly see that by having these two things separated, it substantially increases the amount of traffic coming in and out of the highway, thereby disrupting traffic in that important corridor. As this section of Charlotte Highway demonstrates, there is a large number of fragmented curb cuts that highly disrupt the traffic flow along this corridor. Obviously, fewer access points on the main road, the better the traffic flow is going to be. Likewise, rather than the 660-foot separation rule requirement preventing traffic congestion along this section of Charlotte Highway, it will increase congestion because of the required extra curb cuts. Ironically, this rule recreates the very situation in urban sprawl that it's trying to stop. Compatible uses, especially in automotive, should be paired, not separated. The second point or stated purpose of this was to foster opportunities for distinctive pedestrian-friendly development. The 4.7 acre parcel of land on Catamount Drive would be ideal for such, a village center or something like that, if it weren't being developed as a car wash. Residents in the connecting area could very easily access such a village center via foot, golf cart, what have you. But because the 660-foot separation requirement, the car wash operators were forced to look at different parcels of land other than the one adjacent to the 7-11. If the objective of the district is to foster opportunities for distinctive pedestrian-oriented development, then the 660-foot rule is clearly counterproductive. It forces automotive uses to disperse and be separated on other tracts of land that otherwise could be utilized for pedestrian-friendly development. The 660-foot separation rule also extends to restaurants with fast food, like fast-food type restaurants with drive-throughs. So there's talk about a potential grocery store anchored shopping center across from that same 7-11. But because of this separation rule, such a popular Chick-fil-A or something like that could not be developed there due to this rule. We all have to drive to the grocery store. We all go to fast-food restaurants in a car. I don't see any reason why one can't be located next to the other. Like any suburban community, Lake Wiley community needs automotive services. We're growing more every day. We've got tons of houses coming in. You guys know that better than anybody. So we also want the restaurants and the village centers and such. But if the goal is that for the Lake Wiley community, then the York County Council should not vote and put in place a rule that will cause these businesses to disperse, thereby eating up more of the finite amount of land that we could be developed as business friend or pedestrian-friendly type districts. We believe it is a flawed ordinance for those reasons. It increases congestion by having dissimilar businesses dispersed further out, creating more curb cuts, and that is eating up land that could be used for pedestrian-oriented development. Additionally, the repeal would allow for this development, this car wash, to be put beside the 7-11, where it makes perfect sense. I mean, what else could you possibly put on that location? It would also allow for this pending shopping center to have such a chain like Chick-fil-A or something similar that we do not have in this area now. Currently, most residents are either unaware of the 660-foot separation rule, or they've been misled to believe that it stops these type of automotive businesses coming to our area, when in reality, it just disperses them, again, creating the very problem that we're trying to avoid. I've also spoke to the family who is trying to sell that parcel of land next to the 7-11, and it had, they have been basically hamstrung by this rule to where their property is essentially useless, because what else could you put on this lot that's such a con, acute angle there that would not be affected by the 660-foot separation rule? Most importantly for me and my community is it would leave this open lot for something that is pedestrian-friendly and not a car wash that's having their arm twisted, be moved here because they want in the area, but can't because of this rule. And I've, again, I've spoken to the Pendleton family on this matter, and again, they are in complete agreeance. It's very, very difficult to do anything with this property within the confines of the 660-foot separation rule. So it's, that is more or less my point on it. And again, it's not a matter of we want more automotive businesses or anything like that. We are going to need those eventually. We have hundreds of homes being built just down the road. There is going to be an influx of growth, if we must have it. Let's please make it sensible.
Thank you, Mr. Stacks. I'm sorry, I neglected to see the time ran out when it's six minutes.
Thank you for your time.
I think I've confirmed that we do not have the, we do not have Ms. Witherspoon here with us in the overflow. So we move now to our council member new non-agenda comments.
I got one.
Mr. Aggins.
At the next JPS meeting, which I talked to Huth with earlier, I'd like for it to put down that we're going to cover the ordinance on wreckers that the county sheriff's department wants us to look at.
Did he reach out and request that we consider the wrecker ordinance?
Yeah, from my email.
Okay. So we need to refer that to committee?
Yeah, well, I talked to David. David, anything you want?
No, we just had a request from the sheriff's department to investigate that, so we haven't done anything on the-
That's what it sounds like. Can you let us know? It looks like this is a request to refer something to that committee. Is this the appropriate committee? And did y'all discuss that with Mr. Tolston? Sheriff?
I did not discuss it with Sheriff Tolston.
I don't have a problem with the referral.
You're talking about towing, like car towing?
Yeah. You know, like in the city, you have a pay-to-call, you know, when, if the city calls, you have a rotation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And from my understanding, the county wants to go to theirs. I think they've been following highway patrol, but don't hold me to all that, but they're wanting to discuss it.
Yes, sir. I don't have a problem with referring. I think it needs to start in committee, and if it needs to start there, I think that's the appropriate committee for it to go to. Any other non-agenda comments, council?
Yes.
Mr. Huckabee.
You can go.
Oh, I'll just jump in and say, the young lady that raised a question about our commitment to look at and review other boards and commission that have at-large or more than seven, it was a valid point tonight, and I think we, some people up here said it. I said I wanted to get to that, and I want to thank her for reminding us that several of us up here said that we would support reducing other boards back down to seven. So whatever the other boards are that have more than seven board members, we need to start looking at, looking to reduce those down, because I share some of the same sentiments she did with the library board, and if we're going to do it for the library board, I stand behind doing it for all other boards that we can do it for. Granted that, I think there's one board that state requires us to have more, or allows us, whatever the case may be, for it to be more than seven. But seven should be the ideal number for boards and commissions across the board. So let's look at getting that back in line and bringing this to this council.
I don't, I don't, I think somebody needs to bring up a specific board. There's a lot of boards that are board. So for instance, there's only two boards, and I want to make sure this, I'm glad you brought this up. There's only two boards that are appointed by the county that are, that have special tax millages assigned to them. That's the museum board, and that is the library board. Those folks appoint their own folks. Both of those boards only have seven voting members. So those are the boards that are aligned, that have the special tax assessment. If there are specific requests for boards to be reconsidered, some of the boards actually are on the council website, but they aren't appointing. Karen's not here tonight. She's apparently ill. But several of those boards, I think, are statutorily designated. Some of them require state appointments. They really aren't our appointments. So for instance, like the voter registration board, those folks aren't even appointed by us, but they show up on the county website. So I think somebody's going to have to do a look and identify which ones they'd like to be considered, and make it a little bit more manageable for council to take that on, if there's a board that council's concerned about. Mr. Huckabee.
Yes, ma'am. So every so often, we'll pass an ordinance, or our prior council will pass an ordinance that has an unintentional consequence on our taxpayers. So recently, we passed the Grand Tree Ordinance, and after that was passed, I got a number of phone calls from stakeholders that are affected by that ordinance. So I would like to refer this topic to workshop on October the 10th, invite some stakeholders in to educate us on how they're affected by the ordinance. I'm not suggesting we change the ordinance. I'm suggesting we listen to the people that are affected by what we passed on October the 10th. So that's the first one I'd like to discuss, or get consent that we're going to add this to the workshop on October the 10th.
I don't have any objection to this. I mean, I think we need to be careful what we have on our agenda for the workshop, make sure that we have enough time to address it. We do already have, what are the two things that, did we already put one? The Grand Tree shouldn't, we can revisit that and have an education for council on that. Unless there's an objection from council, I'm fine with that.
No, I would support that. Okay. So workshop? Yeah.
The six, the 660? Or the, which one?
We referred earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's right. I apologize. That's right.
And the second one, in light of Perry Stacks' presentation tonight, prior council had approved the 660-foot provision, which some council members would like to hear from staff on this, to learn and get educated on why or how the 660-foot provision came into play. So I'd like that referred to October 10th workshop as well.
We showed jamming up on October 10th.
That's our next workshop.
Don't load it up too much to make me want to skip it.
Well, don't skip it, because we can't take any action. We don't have you now.
Are there any other items that we have to take up on that workshop?
What's the- I'm not aware of any. I don't think there was anything targeted for that specific date.
I think what we try to do is to make sure that council can get, can get in and out of there within an hour. But we've sometimes gone over that. I know. You conveniently missed the last one, so you didn't get to. If there's no objection from council, I mean, I don't think there's a problem with an education there.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to ask that we hold that workshop here, and that be, people be able to tune into that. I think it's like the last one, the last one that we had, you know, we have a lot of people there, and then people are trying to listen to the audio, and they'd like to tune in. So I just think in transparency, Mr. Huckabee's bringing up something that's not his district. He wasn't on, you're not on council when we passed that, and there are great reasons for it, and you're going to hear from a lot of people about this. I'm going to add, in addition to that, Mr. Stacks, tonight, if you want to talk about sprawl, and I'll save most of my comments for that workshop, but if you want to talk about sprawl, I think would probably be a good idea to be talking about more than two, two-mile stretches, because that's not, within a two-mile stretch, it's hard to identify that as sprawl. And that 233 Catamount, for those of you tuning in at home, and I know there are a lot of you, because I'm getting messages, but that 233 Catamount is not under contract by the car wash developer. So, you know, we just, it's not about the quantity of these locations, it's about similar uses. So we'll obviously talk a little more about that in the workshop.
So since you mentioned me by name, let me say this very quickly. So when I got this presentation, and I read through the presentation, I made some calls over to the county to ask, so are there any other ordinances in place that have a 660-foot provision? And can you tell me where it came from? And I don't have an answer.
I'll do that at the workshop. Yeah, I can tell you that.
And then, the only thing that I'm aware of that has foot provisions in it, we talked about tattoo parlors tonight, that has a foot provision, which we're going to possibly revise and change, bars and ABC stores. I'm not aware of, you know, churches.
Well, this is Lake Wiley overlay. It's a small area plan.
Right.
I feel like I'm getting a point of order from somebody. Somebody wants to speak up.
I know. This is appropriate discussion for the comments.
I think the question is, do we want to refer any of these items for education for council at the workshop? I don't hear any objection from council, but I think that, I don't have a problem with us moving the venue here if that makes it easier for folks. Any other non-agenda comments?
Yeah, I just, I've been contacted lately by a few different constituents around the structure of the Board of Elections. I did have a conversation with several people about it, and again, the Board of Elections, they are nominated by the legislative body in the county, and they're the ones that appoint those positions. But it's a little bit, I think it's a little bit hard to understand from a county, from a county level, or people looking at our county site, because we host that information on there. So people are coming to us, or myself, asking, are you- So people are coming to us, or myself, asking, are you guys supporting the new people that are coming on? And there is no, and I had a conversation with a couple legislators about this, and I think there was, there is an opportunity for further discussion around it, because I think that we, as a body, don't really participate at all, at least from my knowledge, of any of those discussions around who they nominate for those positions, and could we play a greater role in it. So again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask to put it on October 10th, because we won't run here until 1:00 a.m., but I want to, I want to mark this down as for further discussion down the road. That's it for me.
Anyone else? We do have executive session. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do have a motion for personal matter, contractual matter, matter of county manager.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
A little bit of discussion on this, because I don't, I just don't understand why we get to the point of a meeting when we've, we've got, just in transparency, why do we not know ahead of, ahead of this? And we're always adding stuff to the executive session agenda when we get to this point. I don't, I have a little bit of a concern with that. I'm not asking you to answer me, I'm just saying that I feel like every time we meet, we are adding things on to executive session, and the public is not aware, we haven't made them aware, it's not on the agenda ahead of time.
I think this request was made from legal or management, so I mean, is, any other questions?
Executive session matters don't need a 24-hour notice.
Is there, did we get a motion in a second?
Yes, a second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go into executive session. Session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yeah, I have one motion. Move to pursue the personal contractual matter as discussed in executive session.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have most to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.